The City of Rollingwood City Council will come to order on Wednesday, April 20th, 2022 at 6:32. Move to item number one, roll call. Ms. Brown, if you would start us off.
Brooke Brown here.
Alec Robinson.
Roxanne McKee.
Bill McDuffie.
Sarah Hudson.
Gavin Massengill. Have a quorum. With that, we will move on to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up to make public comment?
We have someone who wants to make public comment that is not here yet. Can we defer?
Yes, I will give it just a minute.
I think we probably move on and come back to that if we can.
Okay. I will wait on that. With that, we will move on to employee recognitions and new appointments and move to item number two. We would like to start off this evening with the recognition of our good friend and thin blue line, Mr. Corporal Dan Arispe, and we're recognizing him this evening for 10 years of service to the Rollingwood Police Department. Dan, can you come down? Hardly recognize him about. I'm going to turn it over to the chief, and chief, let you do recognitions and say a few words.
We'll get some shots first. We'd like to present you this plaque in recognition for decade of service to the citizens and the community. You know, 10 years of his career here in Rollingwood, he's seen a lot of changes. When guys were sleeping, he was out there keeping watch. Been through a lot. He wears a lot of hats on our part. He's our recruiter. He helps, he does the background investigation, so he's quite a valuable resource. And he's another officer we stole from Westlake, so we're proud of that. But, you know, in a small community like this, 10 years is quite a long time. So the dedication he's shown to this community and the citizens and many of them who know his by name, you know, without even a call or any impending, it's not uncommon for Dan to check on folks, especially our residents that have been here a long time. So, I mean, it really just goes to the core of what community policing is. We're just, we're so proud of him, and it's a great accomplishment. Thanks for being part of our team.
Thank you, guys. Very much pleasure. I always enjoy working for the community. I mean, it's been a great, it's been a great thing. It's been very unique. It's very special. Everybody else gets to know each other first. Thank you very much. Much honor.
I know we echo all those comments, and thank you so much for years of service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can't, can't thank you enough. All right, with that, we will move on to agenda item number three, introduction of new city employees. And then I'm going to hold on the short recess for new employee reception. But we're going to do, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wayman and let her introduce some of our new employees that we're fortunate enough to have.
We have two newer employees here today. Obviously, Michaela Rodriguez is one of our newer. She has hit the ground running already and has been an asset to the city already. We're so glad to have her here with us. And then I don't believe most of y'all have met yet, Izzy Para. Izzy is our new public works superintendent, also hitting the ground running, working with the public works team. We're just really grateful to have you here, Izzy, and thanks for everything you do, so.
Glad to be part of the city.
These two employees are off to a great start already. I've worked with both of them already on a few things, and they're, they're just doing a great job, and I look forward to, we're going to break here in a moment, have a little reception, and I look forward to all, all the council members having a chance. If you haven't already had a chance to visit with both of them and our newest employee, who we'll get to here in a moment, I hope you'll do that here momentarily. And with that, we were going to, I was reminded, I was looking at the agenda, and as often happens, things that I put on paper that seemed like a good idea at the time, I changed my mind later. So we were going to do the employee reception now and then come back for a grand finale, which would be the swearing in of Desiree. But I want to, I've decided that's no longer the idea that I want to pursue tonight, so. With that, I'm going to pull up item number four and item number five, and discussion and possible action to appoint Desiree Adair as city secretary. And I'm going to ask Ms. Wayman if she would talk to us a little bit about the decision-making process that she and I were part of and the recommendation that we're bringing to council this evening.
Of course, thank you, Mayor. We did post this job to our website and all of our usual posting places. Very excited that Desiree applied for it. Desiree has her master's in public administration from Texas State, so I'm a little, little partial to her. She has experience in human resources, best practice management. I just think she's going to be a huge asset to our team. Also, swim coach, or like swim volunteering is like another thing that I really just get super excited about, and when I saw that she had that, I knew that we, we couldn't pass her up. She has worked with the Government Finance Officers Association Fellowship with engaging local government leaders. She was a graduate intern and best practice program manager for the city of Tomball and has just done some awesome work in the local government field, and we're so excited to have her.
Great.
And with that, and just, we'll, we'll talk at the break, but you may get, be, you may be put to work around here if you, if you're a swim coach. We've got rolling with waves, they're always looking for good swim coaches, so. With that, council, I'll turn it over to you. I'm happy to entertain motions, answer questions, however you would like to proceed, but I am in the market for a motion at some point, and then we'll proceed to a swearing in if that goes well.
I'll move to appoint Desiree Adair as the city secretary.
Second.
You have a motion, council, and a second by Ms. Brown, and the original motion by Ms. Hudson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Five o, the ayes have it. Congratulations. And with that, if you will meet me up front, I will administer the oath of office to you. Right here, raise your right hand. Aye, Desiree Adair.
Aye, Desiree Adair.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of city secretary.
The duties of city secretary.
For the city of Rollingwood and the state of Texas.
For the city of Rollingwood and the state of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
To help me out.
To help me out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, council. We are moving along very efficiently this evening, and with that, we will now move back to item number three and take a short recess for our new, new employee and newest employee reception. Take just a few moments to enjoy refreshments, and then we'll call you back here in about 10 minutes. Stand at ease.
Staff.
I, uh.
Just need a utility drill.
Yeah. Where are you at?
We back on with this?
Yes, we're back on.
Okay.
Okay, council will reconvene into regular session and we will call the roll once more, starting with Ms. Brown.
Present.
Alec Robinson.
Roxanne McKee.
Phil McDuffie.
Sarah Hudson.
Gavin Massengill.
Present, quorum established, and with that, we will move on to, actually, sorry, we're gonna go back slightly to public comment. Is there anyone out there who would like to make public comment on items not on the agenda? I see Mr. Farrell, Tom Farrell has signed up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tom Farrell, thirty-two, twenty-three, Park Hills Drive. I wanted to thank y'all first of all for allowing, we have a forum of our Eames School Board candidates scheduled from Monday at six-thirty here, and I wanted to thank the city for allowing us to do that. And I, I won't, y'all got a long agenda, I'll make this quick.
Is that this coming Monday?
That's this coming Monday, and I wanted to point out a couple of things. Generally, we have had a forum on our school board candidates here, and it generally was put on by our neighborhood association, but unfortunately, our neighborhood association is not currently operating, so this is a very contested race. We have two places being contested, and we have five candidates. And I woke up one morning and went, gee, I've got, I know two of the five candidates on that. So I thought this would be a good opportunity for Rollingwood, which has a history of good voter turnout in these type of elections, to get an opportunity to meet their, their candidates on this. So we've got a couple of things going on with this. One, and I just want to point this out for the record, you know, this has a, the, the school board races and the conduct of the Eames School District has a direct impact on our budget, the city of Rollingwood's budget, in that a lot of the value of our properties are because of the Eames School District. And so we have a vested interest in making sure that we get really good people in there to keep those, those values up and keep our ad valorem taxes coming into the city. So we're tied in this, just like everybody else, and a lot of us don't have any kids in Eames anymore, but I have grandchildren in Eames, so we're circling back and doing this again. I'm not, you know, nature of life. So there are a couple of things I wanted to thank y'all for that. I would ask that the city do two things that, that I think we've, we'd like to do. One, we'd like to see if the city would provide any notification to their citizens. I, I think y'all have rules about using our blackboard to do that, but if there's any way that we can, any other way or that way that we can do it, that'd be great. The other is that I, which I think is more important to me right now, is that we put this on the city Zoom so that people that are not going to be able to be there will be able to see it on that. And I'm not sure y'all's regulations on that. It's not an item on the agenda, but those are the things I would do. And I, first of all, want to really thank you for letting us hold this here. This is being put together pretty quick. This is not my forte to do this stuff, but I think it's, all five candidates have acknowledged that they will be there on Monday on that.
Here.
So they'll be here, there, I sit there.
Did, do you have any of those signs, like, you know, maybe put some signs up on Rollingwood Drive? Because a lot of people, they'll catch, those signs will catch their eyes if you, if the mayor approved of that.
I have thoughts, but it's not on the agenda, so I don't know how to handle this, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
Discussing and having decisions.
Okay.
And Gavin, if you don't mind, if I can visit with you on that sometime before next Monday, we can.
Sure, happy to do that. I, I'm.
I, I, I know.
I, I can give a legal, I can give a legal statement, though, off, just off the top of my head. I can't think of a legal impediment to either posting that it's going to occur or using the city's Zoom, so just off the top of my head.
Thank you very much, and thank all of y'all for serving on that, and just remember, you could be serving on the school board, which have longer agendas than we have. Thank y'all again very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move on to presentations and move on to item number six, presentation and discussion regarding quarterly investment report for the second quarter, and we can have Abel join us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The city of Rollingwood has all its investments with the tax pool. We currently have the total of about five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars invested with tax pool. The yields have gone up. In February, we had about six basis points on the yield. March, they went up to about a little bit over fifteen percent, uh, fifteen basis points, I'm sorry. So I think it just reflects the overall status of interest rates going up. The interest we collected went from forty-nine, oh, almost fifty dollars in the first quarter to about a hundred and thirteen dollars in the second quarter. So again, it's not exactly fantastic, but it's safe. Any questions?
Questions for Abel? Believe you're off the hook, Abel. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, presentation and discussion regarding the budget review for the second quarter.
Currently, the city is at fifty percent of the fiscal year. We've collected about ninety-nine percent of our property taxes, which is about par for us, the city of Rollingwood, and on our city's sales taxes, we've collected about sixty-three percent of what we budgeted for the year. So we're, we're doing pretty good there as far as what we estimated versus what we've collected. On water sales, we're not quite at what we had budgeted. We're at forty-six percent as opposed to the fifty percent. Wastewater revenues, we're at sixty-three percent of our budget on the revenue side. So we're doing, as far as what we budgeted for on the revenue side, we're doing okay. The general fund, overall, we've collected seventy-four percent of our revenue, but bear in mind, most of that is on property taxes, and because we collect ninety-nine percent already, that kind of skews it a little bit. But overall, the revenue has been, has been exceeding our expenditures in the general fund. We're at fifty percent expended on, on the budget, and on the revenue side, we're at seventy-four percent collected. The water fund, when you look at overall revenue and expenditures, we're basically breaking even. On wastewater fund, we're not breaking even. The revenues are not keeping up with our expenditures. However, when we budgeted for the wastewater fund, we knew that also, and so we're doing a little bit better than what we had budgeted for overall, but again, the revenue is not keeping up with expenditures in the wastewater fund. Any questions?
Thank you, Abel. Are there questions for Abel regarding the budget review?
Question, what you just mentioned about the wastewater fund. It, it seems like it's, I guess, how do, when we collect money through the wastewater, I thought that the water fund and wastewater fund were kind of collecting at the same, through the same billing.
I'm not an expert on those collections, so.
I was just, I was just kind of curious why the water would be down and then why the wastewater would be
Right.
like sixty-one percent, like.
I'm not an expert on the rates, so I'm afraid I can't answer that question.
And councilman, and I can turn it over to Ms. Wayman, but I, I don't know the answer to the specific question. I will say that we have been making great strides in collections. I'm not gonna, oh, yeah, they are collections, but accounts receivable, how's that? There were a number of outstanding accounts, as we all know. We have been consistently working through that list, and we have dwindled it down to a very manageable number, so I, that doesn't answer your specific question, but I, I will say that it's, it's not, it shouldn't be due to those outstanding accounts.
So, yeah, one of the things I thought, I mean, this might not be the case, but like, if it's below, is it because maybe we have a lot of construction and people just aren't using as much water as we had forecasted they would? I was just trying to figure out, like, I mean, to me, it seems like, okay, forty-five, like, back on the water fund, like, forty-five percent, higher than our expenditures, forty-two percent, so, okay, that's good, but why is it forty-five percent? Where should it be, or is it lower? Well, actually, no, if you look at where we were last year, that's what I was thinking. It was eighty-one percent, so I was just like, are we just using less water right now, or I thought that, I don't know. It's just a thought I had.
Depends on how much it rains, how much people water, how much, lots of stuff that impacts the, the revenue
It really isn't.
from water sales, because that's based on how much water is, is used.
Right.
And the wastewater is based on the winter averaging, so that's from a year ago, and we, um.
It's just.
We just had a rate study, and so you would think that it would be paying for itself, but, um, those are, they're separately, they're separately established, right? The billing is, is two separate bases, so, bases, whatever, so.
Okay, yeah, I know that's on.
They, they won't necessarily track the same.
I have noticed that too, so, but I don't have a good answer for it. All right, any other questions for Abel? Thank you, Abel.
Yes, sir.
Don't go too far, we'll have you back in a minute. With that, we'll move off, move, we'll close at item number seven, move on to item number eight, presentation regarding a potential philanthropic memorial gift from the Doris Day Swanner family in support of park infrastructure improvements, and I would ask Shanti if she wouldn't mind coming to the podium and, and telling us a little bit about a longtime friend of Rollingwood, the family of Doris Day Swanner, and then I will, and then I'll fill in some blanks after that. And while that's happening, if I could get.
I don't know how, how many, how much time you have for me. Okay. I, I, I'll keep it as brief as possible, but it's a significant moment.
In fairness, I asked you to come, so I'll give you as long as you want.
Okay, Shanti Jayakumar, thirty-three oh nine Park Hills Drive. I've known Doris for a very, very long time, but she is really one of the very early residents of Rollingwood, having moved here in nineteen sixty-one, and the city of, the village of Rollingwood was established in nineteen fifty-five, so you see how early on she came here. Anyway, Doris Day Swanner was born in December fourteenth, nineteen twenty-eight, and she passed away January sixth, twenty twenty. So to friends and neighbors that knew her, she was literally a ray of sunshine. She was the kind of person that commanded attention through her personality, her appearance, and radiance. She would make heads turn when she walked into a room, that kind of person. Always impeccably dressed. We, her friends teased her about how she always looked like a million dollars. Her winning smile radiated her personality, and she endeared herself to all who met her. In short, to know her was to love her. She gave of herself with unstinting grace and humility. She was active both in her beloved Rollingwood and everywhere else that she volunteered. She was ninety-two when she passed away. Doris had moved to Austin in nineteen fifty-two, and she did a BS in home economics and a master's of education in counseling and guidance at Texas State University, earning top honors in her field. Then she taught home economics at O'Henry Junior High School, followed by a role as guidance counselor for the Maynor School District from seventy-four until ninety, when she retired. She organized the first Texas teacher, state teachers' association in Maynor ISD, and served as president there for three years. Her life is marked by a long list of volunteer roles. Stephen Minister, Riverbend Church, Bible study teacher at Westlake Hills Baptist, Park Hills Baptist, South Austin Christian Women's Club. She did not stop there. She was a member of the South Austin Women's Club, Town Lake Garden Club, and of course, the Rollingwood Women's Club. Doris is, Doris was always looking for ways to volunteer and help others. In fact, a few years before she passed away, she had just moved to Brookdale Retirement over here, where she promptly chaired the committee to rewrite the Brookdale Handbook. She also organized and led the weekly Brookdale church services. I took most of this from the, from the memorial brochure from her service, because that's a lot of facts that nobody can put together. But this is a breathtaking array of how one individual can make a difference in the life of others. And it is with great pride and joy that the coterie of Rollingwood friends and I personally applaud Doris's family for proposing a gift to beautify our park. Now, Doris served on the Rollingwood Women's Club Beautification Committee back in nineteen sixty-one, and so we've come full circle, and she's going to realize what we can do to beautify our park. The Rollingwood Women's Club then honored, I have some pictures, I'll pass it around. They honored Doris for, as a grand marshal at the two thousand fifteen July Fourth Parade. And here are some photos, I'll pass it, that show how proud she felt receiving this distinct honor. You might want to know that Doris and her family purchased the lot from George Hadley in nineteen sixty for the grand total of two thousand five hundred dollars. And the finished house, including the lot, cost nineteen thousand dollars, okay? That's nineteen sixty-one. We've come a long way since then, anyway. Air conditioning was added in nineteen sixty-four. Jimmy Day, her son, she had two sons, she had two sons. One of them just passed away very recently, Joey. Jimmy Day recalls, he shared this with me, how Rollingwood was mostly woods in the early days, okay? And the boys would set traps and catch foxes, rabbits, possums, skunks and such. And he said they turned the hides over to someplace in Cedar Park, and that was their pocket money after they sold the pelts to those people. They very often would walk the three miles on dirt road, B Cave Road was a dirt road, from Eames Elementary. And so these are some of the memories he shared, and many more to come, he said. That's how it used to be. In two thousand four, now this is the special part really that I have worked on. Flo Macklin and I interviewed a number of longtime residents. It was, we called it an oral history project, so we taped them telling us, we had some questions and about the early days of living in Rollingwood. Doris wrote the answers to our questions, and I have it in her handwriting here. And I would like to read some of the few statements that might shed light on the context for this gift, which is for the love of Rollingwood and to honor a truly amazing woman. So this is all in her handwriting, and I suddenly came upon my folder full of all these oral history. I have it on tape, too, but that's too hard to show. So she said, I'm, I'm just gonna read this. She said, "We moved here in nineteen sixty-one. We bought a lot in Rollingwood, which was scantily developed in nineteen sixty-one, and built a house the same year. We were attracted to the area because of the beauty of the hill country, the proximity to downtown Austin, the school, and low city taxes." I don't know, some of it may have changed, but that's, those were the things that attracted all of us here, too. Only Eames Elementary existed at that time. Junior high school, they had to go to O'Henry, and for high school, they had to go to Austin High School. There was no other school except the Eames School. There is no one thing, she says, that I liked most about living in Rollingwood. However, there are many, which include the friendliness of the residents, the availability of churches, shopping malls, and, and the closeness to MOPAC. The beauty of the terrain is still unsurprised, she says. Now, some of you may know this, some may not, she said. "I was active in the Rollingwood Women's Club and served in various capacities, among which was as a member of the Beautification Committee. The other member was Betty Etier, and the main entrance to Rollingwood was very unidentifiable. So we planted wildflowers on vacant lots, and we created the concrete structure that you see at the entrance to Rollingwood and put landscaping. Living in Rollingwood in the sixties and seventies was quite primitive as compared to living here today, and this was in two thousand four. We had what was supposed to be a weekly garbage collection. Mr. Durbin was the collector, and he had one red truck. So he drove the red truck pickup and passed by your house if he was already full up in his truck and could not put anything more, and, or he could not lift the bin that you kept out at the roadside. So if you were lucky, you got your luggage, I mean, garbage picked up. And the streets were unpaved, and the water was supplied from a well owned by the city. Practically all the plumbing and appliances had, had to be replaced because of the corrosion caused by the minerals in the well water, okay? All houses were on the septic sewer system at the time. The nearest grocery store was Handy Andy in Lamar Plaza, and so too the, the one pharmacy, People's Drug. And then fire protection was provided by a fire station on Kinney Avenue, which is also down in Austin, until later on, we had the Westlake Volunteer Fire Department, and later, the Rollingwood Fire Volunteer Fire Department. Now, Westlake High School was built in sixty-nine to seventy. My sons, this is very touching, she said, "My sons Jimmy and Joey, they played on the football, basketball, and baseball teams. Because of the small enrollment, students could play and succeed in many activities. Jimmy helped plant the sod on the very first football field at Westlake. Jimmy later was named All Centex Football Player, and he and several members got college scholarships at the end of their first school year. And she said, "I was involved in all of their activities, sports, Halloween parties, and cave. I played baseball with the other Little League mothers on Sadie Hawkins Day, where the women all wore bonnets while they played this. And I was homeroom mother every year that my children attended Eames Elementary, and I attended every football game and attended all their activities of which they were involved." Finally, "Rollingwood needs to repave the streets, restore Hadley Park to its original state, and enlarge City Hall." This is from two thousand four, okay? "It would be nice to have a fire station eventually," and I think you all are working on that. "The Little League ballpark was not up here. It was back there by Ridgewood and Rollingwood Drive. There was five acres, which was pretty much undeveloped." And she talks about a little kid who played with matches, okay? That family has moved since, and they started a fire. And everybody on Gentry and other surrounding areas were really extremely concerned about the fire spreading because it was all wooded. I guess the, and, and the fear was that the Volunteer Fire Department would take a long time to get here to put out the fire. So in spite of the lack of convenience and modernizations, life in Rollingwood was terrific. The cohesiveness and cooperation of my neighbors and friends have made the city what it is today." So this is all verbatim from what she wrote, and I thought I should share it because it gives you a glimpse of the nineteen sixties, seventies, and eighties, Rollingwood, which some of us were here, part of it. I came in the eighties, you too in the eighties. But anyway, I'll just show you some of the pictures that I took. And this was when I, when we interviewed her for the oral history.
Oh, wow.
Thank.
Quite glamorous.
I don't know.
Thank you, Shanti. That's, that was great. Let me, I want you to say a few words in just a second because, but I'm gonna preempt some of what you're about to say, so. Thank you, Shanti. That was great, learning more about Ms., Ms. Doris Day Swanner. So several months ago, and I'd like Tom to hop up in a, in a moment and tell us a little bit more, but several months ago, Jimmy Day, I'm glad that you mentioned Jimmy, reached out to the city. out to the city and entered in some discussions with us about his desire to, to make a significant philanthropic donation to do something in the park. Tom called me when I moved into the mayor's role to kind of give me an update. Those discussions has sort of already been ongoing. I took that information, reached out to Mr. Day, and he and I ended up meeting, going back and forth several times, and I think settled on, at least in concept, an idea that he would like to try to pursue with us in the park. I did not, so these pictures that you have in front of you are not in your packet because I didn't want proof going forward of how terrible I draw. So, but these documents were what was in my head. This is what I endeavored to draw for you when I sat down at my, with my iPad, and this is what came out. And so I didn't want you to get the impression that that's anything that's presentable. But what I wanted, it gives you an idea of what the concept is, and it is a concept, outdoor meeting space, to be called the Doris Day Swanner Outdoor Meeting Space. And it would be designed to try to tie in the upper and lower parks. It would be in this area that is pictured. This at least hopefully gives you some, some sense of concept. What I'm bringing to you this evening though is, I don't need, I'm not asking for emotion, I'm not asking for anything other than me letting you know that my intention is to move forward with trying to figure out how to get this drawn by somebody more capable than myself. I know we've got folks in the neighborhood that I may approach to see if they could help us. Might try to get a few donations together to let a landscape architect sketch something for us. All of it very preliminary, no decisions made, but I'd like to have something visual that's in better shape than this to bring back to have a more substantive discussion with you all. Shanti and I have, have spent some time outside looking at this, Phil and I did last weekend. I have done the same thing with a few of you. So again, it's just a thoughtful discussion, letting you know kind of what my intention is, don't want any surprises. I think that's the appropriate way to move forward, but I'd like to bring you something back that, that I think people could be excited about and try to do it in a way that, that has some, some sketch associated with it by a professional that's not me. And with that, Tom, jump in, I know that you've got a long history and friendship with Jimmy Day, so.
I couldn't add much about Doris that, except she was an absolute gem of a gentlewoman that, just by the classic definition of it. And those of us that, going to the grocery store and you saw Doris, you'd think she was going out for the evening on that, and she was just going to the grocery store. And she raised two very fine young men. These are native sons of, of Rollingwood that are coming back. Jimmy's coming back and giving back to our city on that in honor of his mother. And as a parent, all of us are, you know, that's just tugs at your heartstrings when you figure out that, what they did on that. So, and Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for jumping on that and doing all the hard work you've done on that. So I think that's, that could have easily slipped away during that process, and I'm glad you grabbed it and, and ran with it and, and got there with it. So, thank you very much, and thank y'all.
Thank you, Tom. That's it, counsel. If, if anyone has any thoughts on it, feel free to call me or get with me after the meeting, and we can visit further about it, but I just wanted to give you a, a little bit of a heads up. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Presentation Regarding Timelines Associated with Future Election Dates Related to a Possible Bond Election. Again, in the spirit of no surprises, I want to just begin a discussion, actually continue a discussion that we have had many times in the past. It occurred to city staff and myself and our discussions around a future bond election that we really needed to get our arms around what a timeline, what timeline would be associated with the bond election. With that in mind, we did meet with our, with Bond Counsel to have a discussion about it. Bond Counsel at ORIC did a very nice job, and when they came to meet with us, actually put together a very informative slideshow presentation that was very helpful and informative. That is the presentation that we've posted to your agendas this evening. So take a look at that.
Take a look at that.
Not sure that I'm going to have an echo or not, but, okay. So if you would, just look at it. I don't think there's a need for us to go through each slide this evening. My plan, our plan is to have Bond Counsel back before you next month, so I wanted to give you this presentation now so that you can review it for a month, think of your questions, feel free to get us your questions if they're specific or detailed in nature, and we'll have the professionals here at next month's meeting to give you a better sense of it. You will see a timeline in this presentation that we asked them to put, a very rough timeline. But we, we really need to, it says by mid-May we need to finalize purposes. I think we have a little bit more time than that, but that does give you a sense. And when, when they say finalize purposes, in my mind, what that means is a, a very general discussion about what I believe the three buckets are. I think everyone is, are going to agree with these three buckets in terms of the purposes, and that would be around water, the CIP, which we will try to have to you in final form to be adopted next month. We'll work with everybody on that. It would include the storm, the drainage, stormwater drainage issues that we've talked about in the IIP, and it would likely include the facilities issues that we've all discussed to include the EMS, or not EMS, but the Emergency Service, ESD facility, shared facility in that, in the remodel of the, of the City Hall. So I think those would be generally the three buckets that I would assume would be our final purposes that we would kind of identify by mid-May. But then, as you can see in that, once you take a look at the timelines, really beginning at the end of May, moving very quickly, we'll need to have, to meet some very specific benchmarks because we have a very short window if we do decide to move forward with the bond election, where we have to move forward with the adoption of an election ordinance between the dates of August 10th and August 22nd. That would be for a November bond election. So again, nothing, no decisions for tonight. Take a look, if you would, at this presentation, and then the intent would be for, for the next meeting to really begin a very earnest, methodical discussion on whether or not we move forward with this in the next few months. Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the presentation. In my customary manner, I, when I saw this, I looked to the ordinances to see if they said anything about bond elections or capital improvements. And we have an ordinance 2338 that requires a five-year capital improvement project plan to be adopted annually by the council. So it might behoove us to take a look at that and see if we keep it amended or get in sync with it.
Or do it.
Or do it. Yes. It doesn't talk specifically about bonds, but it does talk specifically about budgeting of projects.
Yeah.
And requires that the project be on the plan to budget it, so.
And I would defer to some of my senior statesmen here, but I know I've been around for six years, and I've never seen that done at a time, so.
It is on the books, unless I've missed something in the uncodified ordinances.
I do not doubt that it's on the books, but I'm confident that it has not been done for quite some time, if ever. So that'll be good, we'll take a look at that as well. All right, any other questions, comments, thoughts? All right, moving on to the consent agenda, happy to entertain a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Ms. Hudson moves consent, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDuffie, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, 5-0. All right, moving on to the regular agenda, discussion and possible action on post-financial audit mid-year budget adjustments, and I would ask Abel to come back to the podium if you would.
Since we're at the midpoint of the fiscal year, we looked at where are we on the budget, and what you have in front of you are some of the items that we're asking to, for you to amend the budget. These items were, some exceeded our budget expenditures and some were unforeseen, I guess, in some cases. The funding for these amendments where you see fund balance transfers in. Those funds were received in August, September of last year, in the last fiscal year. We received over $196,000 from the America Rescue Plans Funds Received, that was in August. And the other source of funding that we also received in, what was it, summer, last summer, was $189,000 on the new vehicle financing. And so these funds at the end of the fiscal year were closed out to fund balance. And so these funds exist currently in fund balance, and that's where I'm saying to transfer the funds from fund balance into estimated revenue for the current year to fund any of these amendments you see in front of you. I think the previous city administrator had mentioned how these funds were to be used for fire hydrants, what else, lift stations.
The ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Right, the ARPA funds were both, if you look down at the very bottom there, the lift station automation, that is full, completed at this time, we'll be implementing that soon. The emergency power is the next step of that project to outfit our lift stations with generators. And then finally, the, the remaining ARPA funds left over from those were allocated towards digital water meters, and that will be part of our three to four-year rollout of a full city of digital meters.
All right, thank you, Abel, thank you, Ashley. Any questions for Abel and Abel or Ashley?
I have a question, just a process question. What we're doing now is authorizing the expenditure of these, or changing the budget to authorize the expenditure.
Yeah, the, most of these were, or a number of these were, were simply misclassified, and so some of them, when the auditor goes through, I think the easiest example to understand is when we get some of the engineering invoices, it'll say general engineering, and so it'll get billed like that, but then when it gets audited and looked at closer, it actually was for a specific water-related item or a wastewater-related item, and so we go through and reclassify those, and so this is us moving, moving some of those funds. Is that a?
I would agree with that, and I think what's important there is that we make these adjustments so that in the end we are more accurate next year, right? We don't ever want to put something in the wrong place or, or, you know, go over budget and not reflect that. We'd like to make sure that it's always in the right pocket, so the next year we understand what we truly spent. A good example of that would be fire hydrant maintenance and replacement. We budgeted 8,000 for it, that was for about one to two fire hydrants. We found more on our plan that needed it, that were, once they were inspected, needed the replacement, and that was put into just the water line item. And then we realized, well, we only budgeted 8,000, we truly spent it on fire hydrants. And that way we know next year, we're not going to need to replace those same fire hydrants again, so we understand that it wasn't just a crossroads expense, it was truly a project that we had planned.
Okay. Well, what is it that triggers a budget amendment? I mean, is it? I had the impression that monies could not be spent unless they were, had been incorporated into an approved budget. But I don't know what detail, you know, what level of the budget that tie occurs. So if someone could just outline the process, you know, as, as, I can understand that the budget, you're never going to hit it, target it exactly, but at what point do, do you come back to the council for approval of a budget amendment? That's one question, and then I have one other one, and there's a line item that I've been, you know, when I've looked through the detailed budgets each month, there's a line item, 1005, 100 dash five, dash 10, dash 5340 miscellaneous, that shows about $113,000 of expenses. But we're, it doesn't look like that's in here, but maybe it is, and I'm just not seeing the tie. So the first question is, how often do we do a correction? And then what is that account?
The, the $113,000 you're referring to was, our consultant made a slight error earlier this year, and when he was here last week, he was going to fix that. So the $113,000 really wasn't an expenditure per se.
What, what, I'm sorry, I didn't under, which consultant?
We had a consultant on, that helped us out on ENCODE, implementation of ENCODE.
Pause there, Abel, he, we migrated all of our, this system over to a new system in ENCODE.
Okay.
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah, and he made an, in October, he entered a wrong.
You did the accounting system, not, not the billing system.
So when he was here last week, he, I brought that to his attention.
Okay.
And he was going to try to fix that.
Okay.
And I believe he's corrected most of it at this point. It was a, it was an entry that was an in-and-out reversal that didn't get reversed in order to just set up our, our financial system, how it needed to be set up. That's the answer on that one. As far as, you know, generally budget amendments, if we know there's a project that wasn't an emergency and it's something we're planning, we generally try to get a budget adjustment to you all ahead of time to review. We did that a few times last year for the GIS mapping program, a few things like that. These ones, they tend to be more in-and-outs and like line item allocations. Unfortunately, some of them we just couldn't avoid, and we do want to fix it as soon as possible, right, when it comes to fire hydrants. I'm trying to think of another big one on here, grinder pump maintenance, things like that. We just want to reflect them where they are, and we believe that we'll cover them with savings and other line items in that same department. That's generally the, the hope, or the ARPA funds as we discussed.
But usually it comes at the time that, usually it's like, it's a new expenditure, if there's a new expenditure that doesn't fit neatly under something we've already budgeted for, that's when it would typically come.
Would come to the council.
Yeah. These are more the type that we, we didn't catch them until we tried to square everything out.
Okay.
And we'll definitely, we usually bring an end-of-year budget adjustment as well, amendment adjustment, just to kind of clear everything up. There will be a few more at that time that we weren't comfortable yet, you know, projecting out that far throughout the year. One good example of that is public information requests, legal expenses, so that's one that we can already tell is going to exceed because we've had a couple large requests this year, but we're not comfortable projecting it out just yet, so we know the line item is going to go over, and we'll have to bring that all back to you in an amendment.
Okay, that's good.
Dave Smith.
And then the catch-all, just the catch-all kind of is that in the audit, at the, once you get through all of that, and then you have the audit again, and they, they catch anything that we didn't catch previously.
Right.
Or theoretically, they're supposed to. All right, any other? All right, any other questions?
Yeah, one other, mayor, one other question I have is about like the statute and what is it? What are we allowed to do legally on, in terms of budget and adjusting it? Are we increasing the budget here? Is that what we're doing? Are we moving things around?
We're moving things around.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if that answers your statutory question or not, but.
Well, uh, if I could interject, I think it would be helpful when we get something like this to show what the impact is by budget category and bottom line, because you can't tell from this.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that next time.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, no problem.
And reassuring.
Yeah, that's a good.
Yes ma'am, I understand.
Now, that's a good suggestion. Because I did ask the same question, but it's not reflected. And that was really my main question. What does this do to the bottom line? And, and, and this one's larger too because of those ARPA funds. We've finally figured out how to, where those got allocated, so.
That sometimes gets told to us in the audit. They tell us how they would like us to reflect that, uh, in, in the books to make it, uh, match their accounting principles. So, um, they were sitting over in a fund. Now that we're spending them, they would like to see them reflected over here. So that's what we did.
All right, any other questions? Agenda item twelve, I would accept a motion.
Move, I, uh, move Mr. Mayor to adopt the, the mid-year budget amendment as reflected in item twelve of the agenda.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion from Ms. Brown, a second from Ms. Hudson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post say no. Ayes have it, five zero. All right, with that, we will move on to agenda item number thirteen. Discussion and possible action on a recommendation from the Utility Commission to send a questionnaire to the community regarding the quality of cell service in Rollingwood. And I will first ask Ms. Wayman to weigh in on this, and then Mr. McDuffie may have something to add.
This did come as a, uh, request from the Utility Commission. Uh, they've been reviewing kind of the, the large projects that have been, uh, hanging out there in the last year or two. Um, and one that keeps coming up is cell service. Uh, and I think it was, um, just kind of the hope of the commission to understand what the, what the impacts are, what the true, uh, cell service issues are that the community is, is seeing. Um, they talked about things that they might include, potentially carriers, if there are certain carriers that are better than others, if there are certain areas of the city. Um, they didn't really outline exact details. I think their, their hope was that if the council was supportive, they would then go forward with crafting a, a short survey for the community, um, and then bringing it back for approval before finally sending it out.
Anyone?
Yeah, I, I think Ashley covered it pretty well. Basically, we have several carriers. Because of our hilly topography, we have a lot of dead zones. We're not certain exactly where those are or if those are carrier-specific. And so we're just trying to figure out the scope of the problem and specifics about the problem before we can try to work with various carriers or perhaps even a, uh, outside party that would supply cellular service to multiple carriers uh, to fix some of these issues. So.
My, my only question is, I, I think it's a good idea. Is there, is, is a questionnaire the best way to go about? Aren't there technical ways to test this? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I would, I would assume so, but I, from what little research, and certainly I'm not an expert in this field, but it's carrier-specific, so we might need to find out what are the cellular carriers and then, uh, work with them. I think this might be a good first step for us to figure out kind of where to start going down that technical road. Like, if, if it's a specific carrier, um, we can't, obviously, we can't mandate that everybody send something back in, but hopefully the squeaky wheels will be the first to send in their information.
Safe bet. Okay.
Yeah, I was going to just follow up your question. Um, I think that, yeah, I mean, the network operators would know, like, you would think they have a dead spot here, it's not good in this, this zone. But I don't know how go, how you go about, like, reaching out to them and finding out that information.
And I, and I would just, I probably have some thoughts on how to reach out to them. And I think maybe Bill, you're right. I guess if, if we were armed with some outcry from the community, it might make it a little easier question, uh, conversation to start with.
My understanding, like, there's previous discussions around this involved, like, people, not so much like there wasn't someone that was willing to put up a tower and provide better service. It was more like, like, there's just people that didn't, there's, you know, disagreement.
There was, yeah, there was a decent amount of that. We also though, I will say, uh, um, because I spearheaded it three years ago. And we passed a five G ordinance, or, uh, it was after that poll attachment bill. Anyway, we, we, we do have a, I know we have a model ordinance on.
You have to have one.
Oh, trust broke to go find it.
Um, I, I, I think it would be, I think it would be great to identify, y- use this as a way to identify where the problems are. And then, um, see who's willing, which of the carriers are willing to come talk to you about them.
Sure.
That might be a better approach than asking them to fill out a questionnaire. Uh, you may, uh, at first blush, get a salesman, but that's okay. You can work up the ladder from there. But the, the, the question about whether someone can put up a tower here to improve cell service, if they, they could sell a product, but they can't obligate the carrier with whom you have your phone today to buy that service from them, there's no way to compel that. But if you bring them here and say, we've got these problems, and if you can improve service, we can make that known in the community, y- you might get a couple of takers who will take you up on that. And I think that would be a, a good way to encourage them to do that. If they know that they're, they, they have a potential for new business that they can get from another carrier that's not going to come up, step up to the plate, we might get better results that way.
Sure.
Okay.
The, the other caution is, if you do, and I'm, I can only describe this generally. If, if you, if the city of Rollingwood were to make an agreement with a carrier, for example, to put a tower in the park, then under the federal law, this five G law, I think that would then obligate the city to allow any other competing carrier to do the same thing. And I don't know that we want to go that path. You know, I don't know that we want to.
Would it allow them, I'm not sure it would allow them to put up another tower.
Some of these facilities are pretty.
It might allow them to have access to put their equipment on that same tower as well, I believe.
Well, I think it, it, the new law is broader than that because it talks about these where you can put the nodes. And those aren't small, you know, they're a, they're a, they're as big as that podium or more. And, uh, if it's on, if you've allowed one carrier to put it on city property, then you've got to let every other carrier do the same thing. So that's one of the caution, you know, that would be a caution. If you were to invite a vendor to come, um, as a city vendor on city property to do that kind of service.
Right.
Well, I think what we're, what we're looking at right now, first and foremost, is just to get feedback from the community of what's the problem, what's the scope of the problem? And then we can investigate more. I mean, I, I don't think we're going to rush into putting up towers or doing anything else. Like, that'll be a whole. We're just trying to find out, is there anything that can be done? So far, reaching out to a couple of vendors, we haven't gotten.
Is the, uh?
We're not really getting much traction.
Would the survey be sent out on its own? Would it be sent out? The water bill, would it be, have you all given it? Have you thought to that?
I don't, my recollection of the Utility Commission is we don't have, they don't have, they haven't created any of those answers yet. They just want to know, are we willing to allow them to look further into doing this and, and doing that? You know, I, I think, I think the water bill would be great. I think, you know, however other ways that we reach out, you know, a swift message or anything else that we can do. I, I don't know what's the best way to get out the word to the neighborhood and, uh, see the people get turned back in surveys, you know, we've had surveys before.
Yeah.
It's going to be, but hopefully people, if you, if you want something changed, this is your opportunity to at least let, let us know you've got a problem.
Okay, Alex?
Yeah, I was going to say, just a, yeah, text message with a link to a form or something could be, something simple and not cost a lot to print something, stuff an envelope, and it might get some feedback that way.
Yeah.
That might be a good first, first step, but, um.
Ma'am.
I mean, are there any issues?
Probably leading that up to the Utility Commission to try to figure out what, what they think would be the best way to do all of that.
So, so, yeah, I'll, I'll move to, uh, you know, approve, uh, the Utility Commission's recommendation to send a questionnaire to the community regarding the quality of cellular service in Rollingwood.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Robinson, uh, a second by Ms. McKee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, five oh. All right, with that, we'll move on to agenda item number fourteen. Update discussion and possible action regarding oak wilt trenching, oak wilt and trenching. And Ms. Kayla? Welcome back. We missed you last month.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, you will find in your packet, uh, two bids from the same contractor, contracting service, We Love Trees, for phase one and phase two that we discussed in February of the Oakwilt Trenching Project. Uh, I'm working to secure a second bid from another contractor right now. That contractor required written, uh, consent agreements prior to coming out to, uh, perform the bid. So I've sent that agreement to legal, they've reviewed it. I've spoken with the, uh, with Roseanne Ferraro, who's been traveling, and Mr. Beisner, and we're working through that to get, uh, the other contractor out. Uh, I also did take a sample, uh, at Ms. Ferraro's property for oak wilt. And at the time this, the sample was taken, it came back negative. Now, that doesn't mean it wasn't positive the next day, but we will, uh, perform other tests and, um, you know, continue to monitor the situation as we get bids.
And you took, was it just one, or did you take a couple of?
I took a couple of samples at different locations on that property.
So that's good news, um, in that we have a little bit of time and it hasn't spread to those, that next location. Uh, just so you know, council, obviously, this bid, uh, for phase one and phase two of this trenching was significantly more than what we thought it was going to be. We were hoping that it would, um, that we could have already moved. If you recall, you did give some authority to move forward with, with some of this previously. And we were hoping to be to that, uh, to that point. But with this bid, we were not able to do that. So we're back out, we're trying to get another bid, see if we can bring this price down. We'll go from there. I, I mean, you can tell us to do something.
Can I just say, thank you for, like, getting some more bids and looking at this stuff. I think it's really important, and I appreciate, appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're. Any other questions, comments, um, ideas?
How, what's our timeframe for trying to get this done?
Do what?
What is our timeframe for trying to get this done?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Okay.
Yep. If anyone has a rock saw that, they would, I'll run it.
Four feet tall.
That's four feet tall, that'd be great. Yeah, it's just, I'm not sure how, uh, inflation has hit, um. Oh, you know what? We have a new city secretary whose husband owns a, I may have a new idea. We'll be with Desrey tomorrow. Anyway, we're, we're looking. And if anyone has any other ideas on contractors, we're not married to either of these two. We'll see how this next bid comes in, but. Okay. If there's no action to be taken on fourteen, going once, going twice, I will move on to, uh, agenda item number fifteen. Uh, request for staff advice regarding no burn policies related to, uh, related responsibilities for notices as between Travis County, the Emergency Service District, and the City of Rollingwood. Uh, Ms. Brown, we recognize you. And I do know that we have the chief here to answer some questions for you, but if you want to.
Great.
Lay out your agenda item.
Um, mayor and members of the, uh, council, this, um, issue was brought to my attention by a resident a couple of, maybe two weeks ago, uh, that we're entering, uh, the summertime, that the, there is tremendous concern about, um, fire, uh, given the drought that we're approaching. And I've noticed then subsequently in various newspapers in the West Bank community, the heightened alert on, um, doing what can be done and being prepared for the potential for, um, um, a, a very significant drought season through the summer and fall. And so I wanted to make sure that we're prepared and, uh, prepared this agenda item to get a, get an overview of where we are and then to discuss where we might go. Uh, and so I would love to hear from Chief Brady on that.
Chief?
Thank you, welcome. Um, so there's a number of actions, I think, if the council was so inclined, it could look at. As you may know, we're currently under a burn ban, well, not we, but the Travis County is. Uh, but when you read the actual, um, document, it's basically covers unincorporated areas of the county. So, uh, I think a lot of people assume when the county's under a burn ban that we're under a burn ban. That's not the case. We would need to implement our own if we were to see fit to do that. So I would, I would suggest a few things. One, I would suggest an ordinance, uh, possibly like Westlake has. Whereas, um, it, it just takes all the work out of it. If the county's in burn ban, then it automatically, the City of Westlake, uh, implements their burn ban. And nothing, nothing prevents, uh, the mayor or the council from declaring one should there be some other circumstances that may not apply to the county. But, but generally, yeah, the one they're under now is from April fifth it began, and will go to May fourth. It's not renewed, and it, you know, they, they kind of go on a case-by-case basis. So that would be, in my opinion, a very simple, uh, beginning in terms of crafting an ordinance for a burn ban. And what you would include in that ban, you could model similar to the county or Westlake or, or kind of a hybrid of, of what we deem necessary. Another suggestion I would make is, uh, and we've been approached before by, uh, Westlake Fire Emergency Service District Nine, and they participate, I think it's a national program, but they, they, they administer sort of a, a, a local version of that called Firewise. And that encompasses, um, a host of different activities, education, assessing current building codes, looking at, um, sort of landscaping plans in terms of, um, I think, uh, for lack of a better word, defensible space. Like, you, you want to have, you know, distances between certain types of vegetation to keep fire from jumping. Uh, but, and then a large part of that too, and, you know, I've noticed it as, as we go into the woods and, and patrol, there's just a lot of dead vegetation. Uh, but, and then a large part of that too, and, you know, I've noticed it as, as we go into the woods and, and patrol, there's just a lot of dead vegetation. Uh, and years and years of that build up, and that's just fuel. So, uh, while it's challenging to get, particularly when it's, sometimes you have inclines and, and things like that. Uh, we're not a huge city, so it probably wouldn't be as big an operation for us to, to undertake, maybe looking at removing some of that, the dead limbs, dead trees. And foliage and reduce as much as possible some of the, the combustible material that could be, uh, be, uh, utilized or by a fire. The, uh, just some other things to note, we're, uh, we are part of the Travis County Comprehensive Emergency Plan. So, uh, I've got a document that, uh, I'll get to the mayor, so we can sign that and renew it. But that's, that's part of, you know, so if there's ever anything critical that happens in the city, we're, uh, we're a component. We're a part of the Greater Travis County Emergency Plan in terms of emergency operations and command structure. So, you know, though, we do have some, some sort of framework in place for, for emergencies that occur. But, uh, yeah, I think, you know, those are some suggestions I would make that perhaps you guys, uh, consider.
Okay.
Is that helpful, Council?
That is helpful, and I think that, uh, at least in my view, what would, what would be first on your list for the next to do?
I would probably have, uh, somebody reach out to the, uh, the Chief Wilson or, or one of his, uh, deputy chiefs and tur, and see what, uh, kind of assessments they could make for our community.
Okay.
And, uh, see if, if we can get in on, on that Firewise program or some other similar, uh, program where, you know. And, and I think it's never too soon or too late to, it could be too late, it could never too soon to begin some sort of education campaign. Occasionally, I think once or twice a year, I'll put something fire-related on our Facebook, but, uh, we, we need sort of a broader audience, maybe, maybe well-connected neighbors that have a lot of. Social interaction with folks and spread the word. But, yeah, just kind of, kind of looking at our, our landscaping and, and things we can do to protect the, the homes in this, this area.
Uh, one thought I had was that, uh, I like the, I like those ideas. Another thought that, and I think we, in a minute, I'll make a motion on those ideas. But I thought we could also perhaps for the next couple of council meetings, invite someone like yourself to give an overview to the community. On the, what you learned about the Waterwise program or, uh, what neighboring communities are doing. And maybe invite the, uh, Emergency Service District that we hope to couple up with, with a fire truck. And see if they have a public presentation that they do. And maybe Travis County, and maybe Travis County, and just keep the level of notice and interest up on this topic. And then maybe come back, um, uh, also at next council meeting with, um, some proposal for dealing with the dead vegetation and some of our. You know, I don't know, I would think it'd be the perimeter first, maybe along, um, uh, veil. And, you know, from endeavor around on that side, and then perhaps the same thing through some of the other major drainage areas. But come up with a plan for what it is we begin to do to clean up some of that dead brush. But that would be, you know, subject to, uh, the will of the council. I think you've hit the nail on the head about what we should, how we should start a program like this.
And, and building on your comment, ma'am, the, uh, you know, if, if eventually we are to have a partnership with the fire department here, having, you know, a five hundred gallon water, uh, vehicle. That could maybe address something early before we have to call from, for fire engines or something farther away, that could also, uh, you know, that could be the difference between maybe putting something out or at least containing it, mitigating it before it gets out of hand.
It seems like it would also be helpful for us to figure out whose responsibility that would be. I mean, if we're talking about private property, you know, if the residents. I, I know that the ditch near my house has trees that have fallen down and are crosswise across the creek. Seems like they should be removed from there, but I don't know who's. Who's responsible for that. You know, is it the property owner on the side that the tree had its roots on? Is it the property owner on the side that the tree is now laying on? Is it the city's because it's going through our drainage easement?
Yeah, I mean, there's some, some legal and easement issues and, and maybe Charlie can look at that, but, or maybe before we reinvent the wheel, I mean, the fire department's already dealt with the, the community, so they may have some of those answers for us.
Right. But I, I think that would be helpful because the more that we can get individuals to take care of it themselves, the less the city has to, has to pay, so.
The, I, I, I live, my backyard is a, a, an extension of this natural area. And my neighbor, um, 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 Ms. McMahon and I got together jointly hired, uh, someone to come and clean all that out, uh, about two years ago. But we could encourage neighbors to do that. Uh, I think bringing the awareness of the danger of fire is a pretty good incentive to take care of some of that. Uh, but we also have like the Delana tract, which is city property that's near a major highway, that if a spark got set there, it could do a lot of damage. Um, I don't know what we have room in the budget to do, but at least we can start in identifying those kinds of things and then taking care of them. Uh, you know, another issue is the drainway along South Crest, that's city-owned property, and it backs up to a major roadway and a lot of homes. And there's a lot of dead wood there, um.
There's a fourteen-year-old who's gonna be working on that this summer.
I'm sorry?
There's a fourteen-year-old that will be working on some of that this summer.
Yes, yes, and the, the good news is it, it's, it's a loo, you know, the hours add up, but the hourly rate's not bad to find some.
Oh, my.
People that can help.
It's a really good rate for that fourteen-year-old.
So, um, I would ask, um, that we, um, direct, uh, Chief Brady to bring back to us at next council meeting, a couple of, uh, a, a report on what he's found from neighboring communities. And, um, his top three priorities for action by this community. Uh, and second, to invite the person he thinks might be mo, most engaging to address the community on this issue. Uh, most engaging and most, uh, prepare, uh, qualified, uh, to also address this issue at the next council meeting.
You have a motion, members, second.
Are we posted for action on this?
I don't.
No.
We're posted for a request.
Oh, we're not posted for action, but I, I have heard your wishes, it is within my power to make it so, and it will be done.
Uh, thank you, thank you, and thank you, Chief Brady. Good work.
That will move on to, uh, agenda item number sixteen, discussion impossible action to approve language to be included in an ordinance requiring residential construction fences. Uh, first apologize, Council, for not having this to you sooner. I got up really early this morning and worked diligently on it, so, um. I'll just read what, what you have in your packets to you, and then it's, um, can be yours to do as you see fit. But I did go back and listen to, um. To the discussion of Council at, at last month's meeting, um, tried to take into account some comments made by Councilman McDuffie related to, um. Uh, concerns around children's access, uh, behind, behind the fences. Uh, some of, uh, Councilwoman Hudson's concerns related to exactly where the fence is and trying to, uh, keep it as much out of the driveway as possible. As well as the driveway concerns that were discussed, and then also Councilwoman Brown's, um, concerns, uh, around, um. The building official having the authority to make certain decisions, uh, keeping it locked after hours, uh, but still maintaining access. And then, uh, no advertising and, uh, and, and determining when it, when it goes up and comes down. So, I did take into account some of those items, and here is what I came up with. Uh, temporary construction site fencing is required during residential construction and shall be placed and removed at the direction of the building official. A fence described by this section may not be erected in such position or placed in a way which constitutes a traffic hazard and shall remain locked when construction is not in progress. Except that the building official shall be provided access at all times for any purpose. A fence as described by this section shall be constructed, one, no less than six feet in height. Two, with plain mesh fabric privacy screening. Three, to surround the entirety of the residential construction. Four, as far away from all street curbs as practicable for the site. And five, in a manner which allows for reasonable visibility around street corners and when exiting adjacent driveways. That's my best effort, do with it as you will.
I think this covers most of the concerns that I had, although I think wording is a little wishy-washy in some places. Um, I'm not sure that as far away from street curbs as practicable, I mean, that's in whose opinion? Um. And, and I, I will notice that, or comment that I, and I wish I had remembered where it was that I saw this. But there's a new construction fence that went up and they have cut the corner, but it's still right up close to the street along.
South Peak and Timberline.
Well, that's not the one it was that I saw up, so there's another one. But. When you're approaching the intersection, you cannot see down the crossroad.
And I tried to keep it broad enough, I, I know that it wasn't quite to the specificity that you would, would want, but I did try to keep it broad enough. And give the building official something to hang their hat on, so that in those types of instances that you're talking about, it wouldn't be. Cause I, my original idea was to give some very specific, you know, so many feet back and so much forty-five degree angle and all this and all that. I backed away from that, at once I started trying to piece together those, that language. And settled on this because I do think it gives us the authority and ability for the building official, or myself included, to be able to, to, to. To physically be in the location that you're talking about, look both ways and tell them, no, keep, keep going, keep going, um, until we get it right. And then in other instances, when it's not that problem and somebody is faced with some real difficulty in being able to stage their job site, then, then we can have some flexibility going the other direction. So, I tried to, I tried to, um, split the baby as it were, so. But I understand.
We have, we have an ordinance that says that you cannot have a, a, a side fence within fifteen feet of the front of the property. For visibility purposes, so people can back out of their driveways. Um, and, and you, on a side yard on a street, you can't have a fence closer than fifteen feet. And these construction fences are up for years when the house is being built. So, to me. You know, it's the same safety issue, whether it's a permanent house or it's a construction fence, and it's actually probably worse during construction. Because then you have all the additional construction vehicles that are parked around and blocking visibility at the same time. And one other thing that I think we need to call out specifically is not enclosing the lift station. And we need to call out that the construction fence cannot enclose a lift station, prevent access from, from a lift station. Because we had a construction fence that was on the street side of a lift station, and that's not. That's not a good policy.
And it should go without being said, but hydrants as well, like, yeah.
Well, that's true, yeah. And, and if you.
I'd rather, can we just say, wh, that which con, uh, a fence described by this section may not be erected in such position or, or placed in a way which constituted, constitutes a traffic or safety hazard? Cause all of those things you just named would fall under a safety.
It would, again.
You could.
Very unspecific for if somebody's coming out here and they put up the fence and then Kerry has to go out there and go, no, this is not far enough back. And then they have to reset it up instead of saying, put it ten feet from the curb. Don't, don't enclose the lift station and don't enclose the fire hydrant, and then, then they know right up front. Don't do those things.
I know, I know, it's just, we all know though, it's hard. The reason we have so much trouble with this code is because we've tried to, to, to guess in such great detail. On every spec, uh, on every conceivable.
Then let's do belts and suspenders, right? Use your wording plus those specifics that you cannot. You cannot enclose lift stations, fire hydrants, and, and it needs to be back, you know, ten feet from the curb.
I guess one of my concerns about that, and I had a discussion, I spoke with Duke Arwood today, and he brought this up. Um, and he talked about, you know, that his personal preference was that there would be no mandate on construction fencing. But if that there was one, there needed to be a great deal of flexibility, the emphasis being that this is temporary fencing, it's not permanent fencing. Um, but the need to be able to put building materials on property, uh, because you, you just need more space when you're constructing. I mean, having, going through a project myself now, I know what it's like trying to make room for all the materials that have to be, um, spread out. And they may be delivered before you're ready for it, and you just have to have lots of room and you have to have leeway to put it. So, I, I emphasize the fact that there, it is temporary construction site fencing, so I'd really rather not hold, um, builders to permanent fence requirements. Um, because I don't know what kind of havoc might be wrought by materials be getting dropped off that can't be accommodated, uh, within the scent, within the fencing. So, that's, um, one of my concerns about trying to be more specific. Um, I would like to ask our lawyer, um, just with the way this is written theoretically. Say you, you have a construction fence, let's say you have, um, a neighbor backing out of the driveway and they say that they can't see. And so they get hit, there's a bad accident. From a liability perspective, where would the city's potential liability, would there be any? And if so, where would it lie? What language would lend itself to that?
Yeah, I, I don't think we would have any liability for that factual scenario.
Okay. So, in terms of figuring out when it is, um, reasonable vil, reasonable vi, visibility around street corners and when it, and exiting adjacent driveways. Is it the builder who proposes it and then the building official that says yea or nay on it?
Yes.
Is that the scenario? Cause this talks about shall be placed and removed at the direction of the building official. And I wasn't sure if that could be read in such a way of placed where the building official says it's to be placed and.
It could be read like that. That was my intent, was to have it be able to be interpreted that way if needed.
Okay. But, so our legal counsel does not think that that is. Okay.
Because it could also be interpreted to mean now is when you place it, now is when you remove it. So that we get to the issue that you were. So that, so, so there's, so there's some flexibility to say, for a builder to say to the building official. Or for the building official to say to the builder, you have to have your, you have to have your fence up before you start setting forms or whatever. And they can say, well, does, can I at least bring in my, all of my raw materials and have them loaded in and then put it up? And the building official could say yes, or the building official could say no, because I need it done this weekend. So, it gives the building officials some flexibility, but allows them to say when it goes up and when it comes down.
Do we need fencing up before demolition starts?
That's a question I have too.
I don't think you want to do that, because you're not going to know where everything is. I think, and, and you've got larger equipment that comes in and out for those demos.
The, on the, on the other side of that question, though, you have the situation like we had right across the street, where, where there are houses on all three sides in a public street with a lot of traffic, and there's just no protection for the people around from either the construction materials, because it's a pretty, you know, these demolitions are pretty violent kind of happenings if you're a next door neighbor. And at least the fence contains some of that and keeps kids, you know, keeps, you know, I think it helps to prevent accidents. We haven't had a bad one yet, but we could have had.
And, and this would allow, I mean, if that's, if that's how we want to do it, I would say that we can just do, this would allow us to adopt that policy still based on this.
Well, if you want to keep some flexibility, you would say something to the effect that is required to be erected before demolition, but you've given the building official the opportunity to say where in that instance, you know, they are temporary, they can be moved. And trucks getting in and out, you know, they, they've got, I've seen a lot of big trucks going in and out when the fence is up, so I'm not sure that's the problem. But my concern is just the actual impact to neighbors during the demolition process. In part, and then second, I think it also helps to keep as much material inside the fence as possible, which also lessens the impact on neighbors. As the mayor is aware, there is a side up on Park Hills where there's construction on two sides of the road, it's a narrow road, there's a hill, it's a steep hill, you can't, for all the parked cars, you can't see the traffic coming or going. And one of the, two of the contractors both had piles of building materials in the street. This morning, I walked by to see if that was taken care of after calling the Kerry and Chief Brady. But this morning, I happened to walk by, the construction fence was open. There is a side yard where in, in one of the instances with more than the depth of the lot and at least thirty feet wide within the construction fence, where all of that dirt could have been put with a little bit of planning. And that's what I want to encourage. I want to encourage that the contractors can't get away, I, I don't mean it that way. That, that they take the time to schedule their deliveries and get it inside the fence. And with a little bit of encouragement from us, I think that can happen. You know, there's some tighter places and, but at least they could make arrangements with Kerry, we're going to do it for, you know, we'll have one drop for these two hours and she can have cones and have Chief Brady alerted, so we don't have an accident. And that's what I'm hoping to achieve with this. But I think, I think we have to put it on the contractor to do the planning that allows them to get their work done and keeps us safe.
I agree.
And if we can talk about this enough, we can get it to that point.
I agree. And I think we're headed that direction, and we'll probably take up that conversation more on one of these next items.
Yes, uh-huh. In terms of the language here, I would like to, I would like to see the fence up before demolition, if that, you, you know, unless there's some critical reason why that can't happen.
Yeah, during demolition, there's piles of rubble that are very unstable.
Yes.
Fence is not really going to stop those, should they?
Well, no, but it might stop, I mean, if part of the purpose of this is to keep kids from getting in things, it might stop kids from getting in there and climbing around on a pile of rubble that's not stable.
Well, and it keeps the rubble from getting in the street, and it makes the contractor do a little planning so that the demolition trucks aren't impeding traffic. You know, you, you just have to plan a little more if you know you've got to do it.
Is the concern that we're not getting, so a lot of times when I see a demolition, I, I think they're getting it almost completely done in one day, if not, you know. If, if there were piles of rubble sitting there overnight or over the weekend, stuff like that, yeah, I can see that that's an invitation for children to be climbing, but usually, what I'm, what I'm afraid is we're, we're creating more impediments to just getting it out of there and getting it out during the demolition, like being very efficient on getting it out, getting it done in one day, and now you've got a clear lot, yes, it's violent, yes, all that, but the kids are, you know, I don't think they're running into the site as it's being demolished, and I think that demolition crews are just getting at it to get it done, because I think they're, they're paid probably to just clear that lot. They want to get it done as quickly as possible and get out of there.
I think that is true, but they need to be safe when they're doing it. And what we saw happening across on Rollingwood Drive was not safe. And the neighbors weren't safe and the people driving, driving down the street weren't safe. So that's, you know, we have a lot of contractors that do a great job, and a lot of them put up the fence before demolition already. Lot of them. Uh, so I'm, you know, maybe we need to get a survey of our contractors, the good ones, and say, what do you advise here? But we've seen, there's been another project where the, there's been no fencing. And, and you can tell from the project, there's just his, you know, it, it's, there are dangerous glass and sharp building materials across the project. You know, the fencing would keep people and animals and pets and out of that. Uh, there's been so much trash, there's got to be rodents, it would keep the rodents inside the project and not out, if they're not going to clean up the trash. But there, you know, it seems to me that it's better for the community for the fencing to be there. And maybe we do a little more digging and see what standard practices are for fencing during demolition.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem at all with the fencing after demolition, I'm, I'm just wondering how practicable it is during the demolition phase, that's all.
Well, maybe we can ask that question and get some input.
Yeah, maybe so, because there's also the interest in having, I, I don't know if it would, I, I just don't know, whether it would slow down the demolition process, because it's also to the neighbor's benefit to get in and out and get her done, I mean, it seems like typically demolitions are done a day or two, and, and it's just, it's just cleared out, and, which is good for the neighbors. I don't know if it would slow it down at all by putting up construction fencing first, I don't know.
I don't know either.
I don't either.
I think we need to seek input.
Well, I know the name of the company that typically is doing the demolition in the neighborhood, but I suspect they're going to have a certain viewpoint that might not be the most all encompassing, so I don't, I don't know how, who we, I think your idea of, of talking to quote unquote, good builders is the first step to, to try to find out, you know, how much of a, what are the concerns?
Right.
You know, rather than go to the demolition people, the demolition people are likely going to say whatever serves their narrow interests and is easiest for them, which would be not to have it, I'm assuming. So I like your idea of, let's talk to, you know, do we have, do we have contacts with the good builders?
I think our building official can.
Okay, great.
Make some, make some of those inquiries.
I guess one of the issues is that sometimes the house is demoed and then there's no construction for a while.
True.
Or, or more than a year.
Well, we've had some that have been more than that, so.
Right. So that would be a situation where, once the demolition is done, that fencing needs to get up so that we don't just have a.
I can, I can fix that. Uh, I will, I want to suggest this, um, I will speak up, and if you want to instruct me differently, that's fine, but I'm going to bring back next month in ordinance form, substantively this language, I will include the demo, uh, also during demolition. We'll, we'll seek the input, because it's easier to, if we bring it back, we can always strike it. But I'll bring it back in ordinance form to be adopted. We'll have some additional input for you, then you can make a call whether you want to strike it or not. Uh, but I'll bring you that back with the reference to demolition. I will figure out how to also say that they can't block the lift stations or the fire hydrants.
Water meters.
Well, some water meters are in the backyard.
The water, yeah, I covered that also, in my opinion, when we say, um.
Well, the ones that are in the front.
That's why I put the language of.
Provided access at all times for any purpose.
That's that, yes, that, thank you, Roxanne.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, happy to do it. Okay. No more action on item number sixteen for this evening. Move on to item number seventeen, discussion of possible action regarding the city's policy as to designation of no parking zones. And recognize Ms. Brown to lay out her agenda item, and then we do have Chief Brady here to discuss it.
I've had a, a request from a couple of different members of the community that we look at possible no parking zones in areas that, where there's limited visibility for traffic where problems are occurring. One of those is on the very steep hill on Timberline. Another is the, we have cones now at where Riley comes into Rollingwood Drive. I think we need to, that, the homeowners there have requested that be made a permanent no parking zone along the Rollingwood side of their house at, approaching the corner at Riley, so that they can, the cones can be used elsewhere and don't get taken by kids on the weekend. And then, as the week bore on, I have become aware that in looking at the problems that we were having along Nixon Drive with the construction and on Park Hills Drive, we have not repainted our no, our existing no parking zone yellow curbs in so long that they've become so faded that our officers are finding it hard to give a ticket, because it's, they're not distinct enough. So two, two issues, and I, I've, this item, originally I, I had invited or wanted to get input from our chief of police as to how we would go about designating new parking, new no parking areas, and then secondly, what those standards would be, how you would evaluate it, who does the evaluation, that sort of thing. And then secondly, I think we need to, and maybe I need to bring this one back. I'll defer to the chair, whether this is within the scope of the agenda item. I think we need to consider a program to repaint the curbs for our existing no parking areas.
Well, you're just ruining all the surprises. But thanks.
It was not intentional.
We, uh, just yesterday actually offered employment to an individual who's, in fact, in the interview, we discussed him being comfortable with having a paintbrush in hand to do the very thing that you're referencing, so. Uh, in addition to a number of other tree trimming items, which would actually fall under the other discussion that you all had earlier. All this to say, we're in the process of trying to bring on someone with expertise in the annual labor category. And so this will be kind of on the agenda, and I look forward to putting that same fourteen-year-old under his tutelage this summer, so.
Oh, good.
Anyway, all that to say, it's a good idea, it's on the, it's on the, on the list, and we're going to be doing some of that already. And my thought would be that we get some of those painted, I mean, we will probably start on Edge Grove, because it annoys me every day that I drive home.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I said, we will probably start on Edge Grove, because it annoys me every time I pull into my home, so. It, it's on the radar and won't be forgotten.
Okay, and what about looking at having our chief of police do a survey of whether or not we need some additional no parking areas? And I'd like to hear from him on that.
Yeah, that's a broader discussion, so I'll turn it over to Chief for that.
Sure, thank you. So, I'm not saying anything anyone doesn't know, but we are going to continue to see increased traffic, and we're going to see more vehicles parking, so, you know, naturally, as we decrease the number of spaces or places that a vehicle could park, we're going to have unintended consequences, and we're going to back those parked vehicles to other places in our city. That being said, you know, the parking philosophy you want to have is, is, is yours. I would suggest, because you mentioned two kind of different things, you mentioned some visibility issues, which I would support, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I mean, I think there's a differentiation between a spot that's potentially dangerous and a neighbor who doesn't want people parking in front of her house, because if you go with that line of logic, you're opening a can of worms. Where do we park? Which houses get parked, cars parked in front of them, and which ones get a reprieve? So I'd be very cautious, I think, to go forward, there would need to be some objective criteria, you know, maybe, and I'm just throwing this out, like two hundred feet line of sight visibility, something, something you could defend, this is our criteria. So when there's a no parking zone, it's not because that's a favored neighbor or what have you, it's because this is what our criteria is. So I would probably look towards, you know, again, somebody with some more traffic engineering expertise, but I would have some very objective criteria that you could use going forward that would cover those areas that we're concerned about. Uh, and then we kind of touched on, there's some low hanging fruit I would look at, you know, cleaning, some of these signs are filthy, the no parking signs, make sure there's sufficient signs, particularly when the no parking zone is, is quite long, painting the curbs. And, you know, I know nobody wants to hear it, but we need to trim some of these canopies, because there's some instances where vehicles park further back, because it just can't get under some of our trees. You know, if it's a legal parking spot, it needs to be able to accommodate a reasonable sized vehicle, particularly knowing this is a community with ongoing construction. Uh, we need to make sure that, that the vehicles can fit in, in those spots that we are going to allow. Because once you have no parking and then you, you have these physical barriers, you're, again, you're limiting, you know, I mean, folks have to park somewhere, I wish we had, you know, more places, I wish we had a staging area where maybe construction workers' personal vehicles could be, and then just the necessary vehicles could get to the site, but we're, we just, you know, real estate here is in short supply, so that's what we have. Again, that would be my recommendation, is that we're, you don't go neighbor by neighbor and case by case, you have a, a broad or, or a very strict objective criteria that, that you can apply, and if it fits, then it makes sense, you know, from a safety standpoint.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
I remember last time you were here speaking about this, this is maybe a couple, three months ago, I can't remember when we, this, this topic did come up, I think. Um, you mentioned that having a, a ticketing, like a sign, something that you could actually ticket is like a bigger process than just painting a yellow, um, a curb yellow, right?
Well, so, yeah, and, and Charlie kinda laid that out last time, but I mean, to, to make, to be enforceable, you need, you need the signage, uh, you need an ordinance by the council designating that specific area. Uh, so it's not just an objective, or a subjective thing, like, there's no parking here today. I mean, you can have sort of special events where there's an ordinance that allows that type of, of activity, but there's gotta be an ordinance that defines that, there's gotta be signage, and I think there's even federal guidelines as to the, to how, how the signage looks. So, you need all those things in place, and of course, the, the painting of the curb gives you an idea of exactly where it starts and where it ends, and as, as we pointed out here today, some of that's getting very faded. And then, of course, there's, I think, I found a resident who might have painted their own curb, so. Just look into that.
I, I will say that swim meets are starting here before very long, and the curb on Wallace along the pool is always a bad spot for people parking and cars coming out up the hill from the swimming pool and trying to pull out, and if people are parked along that curb, so that would be another one to put up there on Gavin's list of Edge Grove- Edge Grove and here around the curb of the park, and then by the, by the pool, those are all pretty perilous places to pull into traffic if there are cars parked where they shouldn't be.
I agree with all of what Chief had to say. I do think eventually that it gets somewhat better, but it's gonna take a while. You know, one thing I would, would say is, you know, let's, let's do focus on trying to, to refurbish the, the painted, the painted curbs and that sort of thing, see where we stand after, after that. Maybe we get some better compliance too, when people actually can recognize that they're not supposed to park somewhere. One of the concerns, and I think Chief mentioned it, that I do have is, um, is the additional signage that ha- that is required. It's not just about painting the curbs, but also the signage that comes with that. And I'm, I'm generally, I generally believe that less signage is better, um, where we can avoid it. Just as, from aesthetics, aesthetically speaking. Alec?
Yeah, so, yeah, one of the thoughts I had there was like, hey, let's do this in phases. Like, if there's a couple spots, let's not go through the whole trouble of like putting the sign up, but we could paint a curb and see if that has any effect or not. And the, the one location that I think everyone probably sees a lot of the cones down Rollingwood Drive, and we mentioned this one. I will say, this is just anecdotally, I was out there walking back up the hill, 'cause I can't run back up the hill anymore. I don't know what's going on. But I was walking, and I kid you not, there was almost a wreck at that intersection. Someone pulling out in a car coming down the hill really fast and not being able to see. So, I agree with what the Chief was saying about objective, like some criteria.
Yes.
So, we should do that, and I don't know how about going about getting that, but I do think that that intersection will end up-
Meeting it.
Meeting it, yeah.
I think we'd have a, a two or three that would. But I don't know that it'd be more than that. But I do think if, if, if we, it's time for, you know, send the Chief around perhaps to look at those, um, the, the, uh, Timberline and the Riley and, um, those two are the ones that are on my bullet list. And, uh, see what you're, what you observe. Uh, and then also, if they're-
And you're pointing those out for what reason? Because they, you believe they do-
Because residents complain about safety on those streets. They complain that on Timberline, if cars are parked, um, along that very steep hill, as you approach the part that goes, uh, west, if you're pulling out of a driveway, the cars coming up the hill can't see people pulling out of their driveway. Because of, if cars are parked along the curb, the cars coming up the hill can't see them, and so it's dangerous.
Well, not only that, the, the width of the streets are, throughout our whole city are variable. Right there, if you get cars parked on both sides at that squeeze point, there is no way to cross that hill without knowing that another car is going to-
It, it's-
I don't go down Timberline up that hill specifically for that reason.
So, Chief, I think what the homework then would be, would be to visit those three locations and see what, what characteristics, and we can go back and listen to this hearing to give you a couple of clues. What, what are those characteristics that those all share? And is it a certain steepness to the hill, is it a certain width of the street, is it a certain-
How, how far you can see the oncoming traffic.
Visibility, whether it be a curve or it be a hill.
Yes.
Not seeing what, what's around the way.
But as we've experienced with some other, I agree. But I know my, my friends here, and they're gonna want more specifics. So, we need to come up with more specifics on what those specific criterias will be. 'Cause I agree, it is, it is around visibility, but it, let's, let's try to figure out what those characteristics are that, that are already present, um, in some sort of linear footage and width and all those sorts of things. Is that, is that meet councils?
So, one of the few things I remember from my traffic engineering class- Called stopping sight distance.
Yeah.
They're the words.
Depending, depending on the speed-
There, there'll be standards.
There is a, a defined distance that you have to be able to see a hazard and be able to stop. And so, you know, when you come out of a hill or you're whatever, you know, if you're going thirty miles an hour and the stopping sight distance is fifty feet or a hundred feet or whatever it is, that would be to make sure that you have vision that far. And if you don't, then you need to have a, a clearer, you know, view, um-
So, I think we start sketching that out. Um, let's see where we are. I'd, I don't, I would prefer not to bring back something to council, uh, and I think we agree, we've talked about it briefly. Um, I don't think just saying no parking on every corner in the-
No.
And then a neighborhood is the right-
No one's suggesting that.
Yeah.
Well, there is state, there is state law about how far away from a corner you can park, isn't there?
Yeah, so you have, uh, well, you have twenty feet of a crosswalk, but I think those are marked crosswalks. Uh, thirty feet from a stop or yield sign, but that's on the approach to the sign. So, if you have a, say if it's just a stop on one side, it becomes a little, at least in my mind, a little less clear on the other sides, so, um-
And what, what, what I observed this last week with the construction around here is that the heavy trucks carrying heavy materials to go up our hills have to get up ahead of steam. And if they can't see the oncoming traffic, there's a dangerous, there's, there's a safety issue. And that happened several times with residents in this part of the neighborhood because of the site along Nixon and Park Hills. And it, it'll, it'll be the same with construction along Timberline, even worse, 'cause that's a longer, steeper hill. So-
Definitely wouldn't stay on my hill, which is not the worst hill that we're talking about, but same thing, they're, they're getting up ahead of steam and, and with the weight of those trucks, there's no way they could stop if something-
All right. Now, we can approach it a different way if you want us to, or?
It's, I mean, we're not talking about convenience, we're talking about safety. That's my, my focus.
Perfect, I agree.
And I think your approach sounds good. I think, Chief Brady.
Circle up, I think we have a meeting on Friday, let's add this to the discussion.
Thank you.
And for the record, mainly for when Ashley listens to this again, we'll bring this back next, at next council meeting. Okay, discussion, or, no, sorry, uh, number eighteen, staff briefing as to current building enforcement policies and procedures and council discussion and possible action with regard to adoption of a statement of policy regarding enforcement of building permits requirements, including processes for enforcement of violations, uh, designation of code compliance, officer actions with respect to repeat violations, periodic onsite inspection and permit activities, and as-built construction. This was an item that was on the agenda last, uh, the, uh, last council meeting, members. Um, uh, Ms. Kayler was on vacation and not able to be with us, and I hope she's rested up and ready to go this evening, so. Ms. Kayler, if you would step up?
Good evening again, everyone.
Did you want me to present this item?
I'm sorry, yes, I was getting her in position. But now I'll recognize Ms. Brown to lay out the item.
Uh, the reason I have brought this, uh, item, and, uh, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, we could also discuss item nineteen, which is, um, permit applications.
I'm happy to do the, these in tandem. Uh, also pulling up agenda item number nineteen, discussion and possible action to update building permit applications consistent with current ordinances and requirements, including ordinance number two zero one eight zero nine nineteen B requiring designation of a responsible person for permit compliance and discussion and possible action as to the permits not in compliance with ordinance requirements. And I know that we've got an update on this as well, but I'll recognize you also to lay out both items.
Um, on both these items, one, one deals with, uh, are we enforcing the policies we have? And then the other de- deals with are our applications and permits consistent with our ordinances? And this is existing policies that are on the books. Um, a number of people are complaining about various things, a number of different things about our building permits, uh, what contractors are doing or not doing. And there's also a number of concerns that, um, um, the permits, um, applications don't, uh, track the, for example, we talked about this at a prior meeting, the permit applications, uh, don't identify the responsible person, although our ordinances state that we can hold the responsible person accountable if there are violations of the ordinances with respect to a permit. And so, we have some, uh, what I'll call some disconnects in our current processes. Uh, the, I know Carrie's explained, there's a separate form for a person to be identified as the responsible person, but we don't, that's not on the website, it's not always done. The list we have of, of permities doesn't, I think Roxanne, uh, several years ago, uh, amended the ordinance to require that the, or had brought forth a proposal to amend the ordinance to require that when the responsible person is an entity or corporate entity, that there be a, a true individual and telephone number associated with that. So, where, there are, there, um, it, it seems that we have gaps in what those, uh, what's required, what's enforced, and what our documents do with respect to what our ordinances require. And on both these items, after thinking about them and, um, identifying, uh, what we might be able to accomplish, my request, Mr. Mayor, would be that we set these two items for a special city council meeting so that we can have a council meeting where that's what we address. And we have time to address it, and we have time to hear from Carrie, we have time to hear from contractors if they wanna come and speak, we have time to hear from the community, and we're not doing it at nine o'clock at night. So, I would move that we set a special date, a date for a special city council meeting and take up the matters that are, um, have been posted for notice in items eighteen and nineteen.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Your motion is second, uh, let's have a discussion. Okay. Tell me about this time. So, when, when would you-
Well, thank you. Um, for the record, we had a motion and a second, and we're in discussion. Um, okay, when would you want to do this?
I would think, uh, here's, here's what I would like to try to do, and that is to, um, I can identify the concerns that have been brought to me, circulate those to the council, have Ashley, Ms. Wayman post them for, for public view, and, uh, identify and, and then have, have an opportunity for the community to focus on those, have the contractor community focus on them, and then, let's say, three weeks, perhaps, we could, we could accomplish that. And have a good discussion of what's working, what's not working, what would make life better for all of us. And, uh, do it in a collaborative way as opposed to, you know, um, um, uh, debate stage. Uh, but I would think we could come up with a list like that. Carrie could, may have her own list, or Ms. Kayler may have her own list of what she would like to see, what would make her life easier with respect to this process. And let's bring it back, you know, let's say three weeks, or if that's not soon enough, five weeks. I haven't, I don't have a particular date in mind, but the soon, as, as soon as reasonably possible, uh, for us to get our homework done and have a, a, uh, well-planned and, um, um, agenda item, have issues laid out in advance of that council meeting, and let's bring people together and talk about it.
And I would like to include, uh, Chief Brady-
Yes.
-or someone he designates within the police force to, to join in that, 'cause they're, they're here on weekends and holidays and so forth.
I think that's a good idea, too.
Well, you drive a hard bargain, because I do have an early mo- morning meeting tomorrow. And it would be nice to get out of here.
Yes. I thought there might be some appeal to that.
Um, okay, well, let's, I would say, well, you have a motion, you have a second, um-
You know the calendar better than we do, Mr. Mayor.
That's what I was gonna say, let's, uh, maybe we'll do a doodle or some sort of polling with the council-
Yeah.
To figure out when-
I, I'm sorry, I-
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll poll the council to see what, what a good date might be.
Okay. Great.
And, uh, I know summer is fast approaching, we'll just have to figure out when-
Yeah, let's do it before the end of May is what my motion would be. My recommendation would be.
I think that, I think we can make that work, okay? Uh, you have a motion and a second, uh, on items eighteen and nineteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ayes have at five oh. Okay, with that, we will move on to agenda item number twenty, discussion and possible action on the process for adoption of a comprehensive plan. I will recognize Councilwoman Brown to lay this out, and then, um, we'll have a couple of different things that we'll want to discuss, but I'll recognize Councilwoman Brown to begin with.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, we've had workshops on the comprehensive plan. Uh, we now, uh, this item is targeted to bring that back to the council for action. Uh, at some point, it must be reviewed, the comprehensive plan must be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I believe the question for the council would be, do you want to, does the council want to, uh, provide- be, do you want to, does the council want to, uh, provide comments to the plan in advance of its consideration by planning and zoning, or after consideration by planning and zoning? And then, um, I believe Charlie or, or, or Ms. Wayman may be ready to tell us when and how we get this in front of planning and zoning, and whether the council sets a timeline for that, or do we schedule it, direct planning and zoning to take it up? I'm not sure what the process is for planning and zoning, I just know it has to go through planning and zoning before this council can finally approve a plan. And I know, also based on our previous comments, that this council, uh, wants the opportunity to comment on substance of the plan as well, so I'd like to get those two things scheduled. And I don't know if Charlie or, and, or, uh, Ms. Wayman want to advise us on whether that consideration by planning and zoning should come now or after council action, and then also what kind of timeframe we've got to, uh, provide for planning and zoning. I don't know if it's one hearing, or a public hearing, or there's a notice requirement.
Yeah, the statute just says, um, this is two thirteen, the Local Government Code, a comprehensive plan may be adopted or amended by ordinance following a hearing at which the public is given the opportunity to give testimony and present written evidence, and re- review by the municipality's planning commission or department if one exists. Um, and then it says you can establish in its charters or by ordinance procedures for adopting or amending a comprehensive plan. So, it, uh, it seems to me that you could do it whatever, you don't have to adopt an ordinance for the procedures and process, because it says may, but you could do it either way you want. You could have city council go through the, the, the process first, and then have them review it, or have them review it first and bring it forward to city council. So, whatever works for the, the community and for this body is, is, would be appropriate.
Okay.
What would your preference be?
Well, I, I have been through the plan thoroughly, I have no suggested changes. So I would defer to the council for that question. Uh, you know, I know that there are concerns with some parts of it, so I would, I would defer to the council to advise whether they want to make their changes.
Have a question.
Before P and Z, or ask for P and Z to review and make recommendations, and then take up P and Z recommendations, as well as the council's own recommendations, at one time. That, the only, the only thing I see is it might save time to get P and Z's recommendations, because the council would want to consider that before final adoption. So, you could get those recommendations, make your own recommendations, and then it could come to the council for, you know, make your own recommendations when P and Z recommendations come to the council.
Mr. Zech, would they, uh, would we need to post, obviously if P and Z posted it, do they also need to, um, would they need to post in the newspaper also?
No publication requirements in the statute.
Pretty straightforward, sounds to me like. I would agree, I think send it to P and Z and let them take a crack at it. Not a crack, but take a look at it.
Without any input from ca- concerns that have been identified by council. I, I'm wondering if there, a joint workshop of some sort might be in order, whether some of these issues to get resolved. I know that Sarah had brought up some issues with the survey itself and how it was worded, and you questioned the conclusions drawn.
And.
So I'm just trying to figure out how to.
I mean, I asu- I assume that when it comes back, I, I would assume council's gonna, you're going to fine tune it however you see fit in the final adoption process, but, um.
That doesn't have to go back to P and Z.
I don't think, I wouldn't think so. I would assume P and Z is gonna take more, be more focused on the land usage issues and those issues that are more specific to planning and zoning specifically, but, um. I think the basic question is, do you want to send it to P and Z, you know, tonight?
That, that question, and then when, when do we want them to return it to us with their comments? And then we can sched- and then schedule, put a marker down for when the council will take it back up.
I assume, um, Mr. Zech, that if council were to send something to planning and zoning, they could place it on the next planning and zoning agenda by action, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I think that's how I would suggest you do it, is to send it, send it to planning and zoning to be placed on their next regularly scheduled meeting, is what I would suggest. For, and I would just, I would keep it broad and say for consideration and recommendation back to council.
Mm-huh.
And one last question for Charlie. I, I believe that you always retain the ability to, to, to pull it back from couns-, uh, from planning and, like, you don't have to wait for it to come back from council, from planning and zoning, for council to take action, correct?
No, the, it just requires that it be, it doesn't require that it, it doesn't even require that it be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, it could be reviewed by your planning department, so.
I'm sorry, I cannot, I cannot hear.
He's, oh. So, so long as the review occurs, that's all that's required. So, so long as that review occurs prior to city council adopting the comprehensive plan, that's all that matters.
Okay.
Did that, I don't know if that answered your question.
It did, yep. My point being, you don't have to wait for it to come back before you take action. I think you should, but you don't have to.
Okay.
And then it can, he was saying that it can be either planning and zoning, or your own planning department.
Yeah, that's right. It, it, the statute gives you the choice, either your planning department can do the review, or the planning commission can do the review.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment about the timing of this. I mean, we hadn't had a comprehensive plan ever, um, and I'm not saying that we want to push this off indefinitely, but I just, in my head, thinking about summertime and council meetings and things, um, people not being around and, and that kind of thing, um, and like, I'm wondering, like, do we need to, I mean, it sounds like the, like, the timeframe we're going on right now is like, okay, in June, this will be back, and we'll, we'll, uh, you know, have a vote on it. Um, I'm wondering if, like, like, August, when, I mean, that, that could be in the middle of people, and, not that we had a lot of people show up, um, to our, uh, public.
Shanti and Kevin are gonna be offended, although now I see Holly's also here, so.
(laughing).
I think she's just making, I think she's just making sure this is really where I am.
(laughing).
It's a great picture.
Yeah, I was at the Casa Gala, I was there.
Yeah, that's just, I mean, it's just something for people to think about, that's all.
No, I think that's right. I mean, in my opinion, it's optics as much as anything. Uh, there has been a great deal of work done on this, I think we should, you know, finish the job that was started. Um, I also think that it lends itself to a conversation that we theoretically hopefully will have on a, regarding a bond election, because I do think it's, um, you know, another feather in the council's cap. It's something that, uh, previous councils have undertaken, it will be something that you all complete. I just think it shows a good continuity that, that we're continuing the, the, the work of the city. Um, and a lot of what will be discussed in terms of a bond election will be component parts of the comprehensive plan, so I think it's good to have those.
And, and one, one more element is that the comprehensive plan has a lot of good things for improving retail and restaurant, restaurants and our commercials district.
Yes.
But we can't get to that till we've adopted it, then we can do the zoning changes. So, my, I'd rather do this sooner than later.
I think that's right.
So we can get to the point that we can do those zoning changes.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, look forward to nicer development along BK's route.
I think that's, I, I agree with that.
That's the, that's the cherry for me.
I, I agree with that, and I have, I don't know exactly what this conversation's going to be, but, um, at least one of the developers that's involved with the, some developments across BK's has reached out and wants to have an initial discussion. I don't know what that's gonna be about yet, but, um.
Have them look at the appendix on commercial.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to telling them.
Changes in the comprehensive plan.
I'm looking forward to telling them just that, to say, this is not completed yet, but it will be soon, let's talk about what, what maybe could be done, so.
Right.
It's good, I think all of that is good timing coming together, so.
Right.
Anyway, I don't know, I got off on a tangent, but.
When, do we know when the next planning and zoning meeting would be?
Yes, we do.
They usually meet the first Wednesday of the month, um, and so assuming that there is quorum, I believe that is May fourth?
Wednesday, May fourth? Okay.
So this could be back, like, next month, four weeks?
That would be our, that would be our hope, if we could get them focused on it. What, what we, if you, if this were to pass, we, we might try to send it to them ahead of time, and give them some, a few, you know, a week or so to digest it, so that they, make them maybe could move faster on it.
Right. And that way Charlie can spend his summer doing commercial zoning ordinance for us.
There you go.
It, would it be appropriate for me to ask a question, a legal question about the, I'm, I'm still concerned about, at what point do you jeopardize a single-family, um, zone by having granny flats? If that's an issue or not an issue, I mean, what point does it become multifamily housing, if you have two separate dwelling places on a piece of property, that's owned, single-family residential?
So in terms of this particular posting, I think that would, I think it would be an appropriate, I think it would be an appropriate discussion for us to help you ensure that that is had at the, uh, P and Z level, and then when it comes back to council, certainly would be an appropriate conversation for you to have at that time as well.
And then that's really a, it's really a discussion during the zoning, during, sort of the zoning regulatory process, more than it is the comprehensive plan process, because you're, you're gonna make those differentiations in the regulatory process.
Got it.
At that granular level.
Which would be after adoption of.
Right, after the adoption.
Got it. Thank you.
So what would the, I, I agree that having this adopted sooner allows us to, to make some of the changes that, and there's been a lot of work that's gone in on this. There, there were also some limitations that were put on the process, and some things that I thought were really important when we started talking about a comprehensive plan that did not get included in the review process. Um, a lot of them related to residential construction and, you know, kind of what do we want Rollingwood to look like going forward, and do we need to put, you know, the four-letter words, not four letters, but impervious cover limits, or, um, do we need to redefine our height limits, or our setbacks, or our, you know, footprint size, or all of this stuff? And I think, I want to understand what our options are for adding to the comprehensive plan to cover those sorts of things. You know, if we're, if they're not addressed now, and they haven't been, can we do some further, get P and Z to take this on and take a look at this? Um, because people are bringing up concerns about what's going in. And if we're gonna have a bond election and talk about spending millions of dollars on drainage projects, and then people are gonna go, so why should I pay for this if you're not limiting how much and it's just gonna keep getting worse and worse? You, you can't, you can't fix a problem that you're not stopping the bleeding first, right?
Right.
So, um, I just wondered what the process is for adopting what we have now, and then adding to that in the not-too-distant future.
The, I mean, I'll take a stab at it, and I'll get, Charlie may already know his answer, but I would, I would assume as elected officials, you would need two other votes, and you could change what you wanted to in it. I, I will say, I don't know that I think that that's a, an appropriate or a, a good idea, because I think that there was a great deal of deliberation that transpired on the part of all of the members of the comprehensive plan, and then to say, well, I don't think you got it right, that you should have added X, Y, and Z.
They were, they were constrained from doing some of the things.
And, and it's in your prerogative to do it as a council, I'm just telling you my opinion on it.
I'm just asking what the, what the.
I think you would be a motion and two other votes away from making that happen.
I. If I might offer, uh, I think in view of, the comprehensive plan does note that limitation, and I think in view of that, one of the things that could be considered as an option is to, um, adopt the comprehensive plan with the consideration, with the, the stated intent that that part, that, that those issues be addressed in a supplement to be developed to the comprehensive plan that goes more deeply into those subjects that weren't covered.
And that's exact, that's.
In a second process.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. I just want to make sure that that is a legitimate way to handle this, and it doesn't cause us any other unintended consequences.
We supplement the comprehensive plan to address those items that weren't considered.
Right.
Expressly excluded from the scope of the plan.
Right.
I, I don't, I don't think you would have a, a legal or, I don't think there would be a hurdle.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
I would move, make a mo-, I'm, I move to send the comprehensive plan to the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission to be placed on their next regular scheduled meeting for consideration and recommendation back to the council.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hmm, I'm gonna give this one to Roxanne.
(laughing).
You have a motion by Ms. Brown, a second from Ms. McKee. All those, uh, is there further discussion?
So, one thing, does the planning and zoning just review it, and it's not like they sit on it, they'll have to have it for that meeting, and then it's done, right?
Yes, they, no, they will review it, if they are, we, and we will do our best to prepare them to review it and get it back to you, but if it is not back to you in time for you to want to take action, you, as long as they've seen it, which they will, by the time you take your next action at the next meeting, it's, that's in your, that's your prerogative.
And, and I will undertake to send an email to the members of the P and Z with the link attached.
Oh, that'd be helpful.
For the plan and offer to answer questions.
Well, actually.
We need you to send it to Ashley, so Ashley can send it out.
Yes, okay.
That'd be great, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, further discussion. Hearing none. All those, you have a motion, you have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Ayes have it, five, five oh. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, Discussion and Possible Action on Revisions to the Rollingwood Mopac South Expansion Task Force Resolution. Uh, recognize Ms. Brown to lay out her, uh, Agenda Item.
Uh, this, uh, is bringing back to you the resolution. When we considered the Mopac South expansion, uh, we decided that it would be a good idea to have our esteemed mayor as chair of that, um, task force, and to, because we had five good appointees to expand the, the, uh, membership from four to five, and that's what this resolution d- does, and I move adoption.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown, a second by Ms. McKee. Uh, is there further discussion? Uh, I'll just say, thank you, uh, happy to make this official. We have had a, sort of an informal gathering of that group. Uh, I think we had a good organizational meeting, and we look forward to keeping you up to speed. I think it will be a lo- around for a long, long time.
And they're excited about it, and engaged.
Yep, so, uh, with that, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Ayes have it, five zero, motion carries.
And, uh, we also promised to send the task force a copy of the resolution as passed in its final form.
Thank you for noting that. We will send a final resolution to, at that, um, to the task force. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Request for Illegal Opinion on the Use of Bond Funds and City Funds. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-two, discussion possible action regarding a request for a legal opinion on the use of bond funds and city funds. For the relocation, for the relocation of water meters, uh, recognize, uh, Ms. Brown to lay out her resolution, uh, laid out her agenda item.
Okay, um, in reviewing the previous bond, uh, project that was done in. Twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen, I came across a legal issue that was raised, uh, in that, uh, bond process. And that was, it was raised by Bond Council late in the day. Uh, that project included funds to relocate, to abandon the water line between Vale and Farley. And relocate the water meters. Bond Council issued an opinion, uh, that said, you can't use, you can't use. Bond funds for that because of, uh, constitutional language and a, and a state statute. That says, here's, here's the way that cities can use, here's the way that cities can finance the relocation of water meters. And so, because that was disruptive in the previous bond process, I want to get our, I, I'm. I brought this item up so we can get our city attorney engaged early on and advise us. If we can use bond funds or city funds for any additional water meter relocations. That might be included in the current package. We don't know yet, there may only be a handful. Uh, if what was done, what we think was done in the prior project was done. Uh, but there's still a handful and there may be some meters that are remaining to be moved from backyards to front yards. And so I wanna get clear what we can and can't do with regard to use of city funds for moving meters. The notion is that because it's private property, the city is not enabled to spend the funds to move. A water meter which really belongs to the customer and not the city, the water meter itself and the lateral. So that's the issue and, um, the, um, agenda one sheet. Identifies the constitutional and statutory provisions that were reviewed at the time. So I would like to request that we ask our city attorney to, uh, give us an opinion, review that legal opinion. See if there's anything that needs to be updated and then advise us as to the status of how funds may or may not be used for those purposes.
Um, and before you make a motion on this, I would, I'm happy to coordinate with, with our city attorney. But I would also, if you're, if you're going to mention the city attorney in your motion, I would ask you to also just at least give me the option. Uh, or the ability to also coordinate with Bond Council, since we will have Bond Council here, probably most likely at this next meeting. Um, because there's some issues that Bond Council may be more adept to, to address than.
Bond Council will know what the Attorney General will approve.
That piece of it, right, and then we can get with Charlie on the other piece of it. I will say. I have, I do know what you're referring to, I have looked at it, I can't imagine that there's not a, um. I'm not gonna say a way around it, but I can't imagine that there's not some other ability for a city. To, uh, to pay for a line that we're requiring them to move for our own purposes.
And I don't have a dog in the fight, I just wanna make sure we get it addressed.
Very valid question. I think that the intent of this was to ensure that, you know. For lack of a better example, that the mayor doesn't have you come move my meter wherever I want to, to my benefit.
The process under the statute, the, the, the constitution says this, that, the. The legislature shall determine when these funds can be used on private property. Then there's a statute, and the statute says that when water meters are moved. Uh, the, it's a, it's a, the municipality shall assess the cost of the relocation or replacement. Of the lateral against the property on which the lateral is located. And you can give the customer notice, then there's a, a five-year time period that, the city can pay for it. But there's a five-year time period in which the customers to, to, uh, be assessed for the repayment. And then there's a case law that says this exhausts the, the authority of a city to do this. Because legislature has spoken. Now, there may be a way around it, I'm just repeating what's in the opinion and that's why. It has caused me concern and I think we, if we can get, you know, I think that's a legitimate question.
I, it's definitely a legitimate question, um.
And how, how to, if there are means by which it's not so strict, that's a legitimate question too.
Cause it's not unlike our prohibition to, um, our prohibition against giving. You know, giving property to, to a private individual, um. The difference here, I think, is that we're, in this scenario, we would be requiring. If, if someone came to me and said, or if a city, the municipal, municipality came to me and said, hey, you've got a water meter in the back and you, we need it in the front. You need to, we need to do that, you need to pay for it, I would say, no.
I'm not gonna do that, yeah, and that's, I think that's the, that's the problem with the statute, that's, you know.
Right.
Well, the meter itself belongs to the city, right?
Yeah, and I'm using that.
It's not the meter, it's the, it's the, from the meter to the house.
Right.
Yeah.
That is the concern.
When I, when I read this, I don't know, um, if I'm following along exactly everything you're talking about here, but when I read this. Um, one of the things I noticed is it says, if the relocation or replacement is done in conjunction with, or immediately following. The replacement or relocation of water mains serving the property, so it seemed like you could do this, but can't like, to your point, like. Years later, just go first the, 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 the owner of the property to like pay for moving the, the water meter, right?
Right.
That's what it, okay.
Yeah, I, no, I, I think that's right.
Okay.
And I think that's what we're gonna try to figure out. My, I, I, I don't know, we'll, we'll look at it, we'll definitely, uh, get with council, we'll get with Bond Council. We'll see, maybe there's some public use type exemption out there in a court case or somewhere else that we could find. But we, we'll definitely look into it, it's a good question.
But yeah, and that's what I was a little bit like confused about, I didn't know, we were talking about the Bond, uh, Council coming in. I didn't know if this was like for, hey, future projects that we do, we replace a line, uh, dig up the road or where, wherever we put any line. I think in that case, it seemed pretty obvious, okay, you can, you can do it, new line, move, move, uh, move the, move the laterals. Move the meter up front and then charge the resident for that, uh, over a period of five years.
And I, and I think, just to clarify from, uh, Councilwoman Brown, not to put words in her mouth, but I, this came about. When we had talked about the back, back, uh, backyard meter relocations. Uh, I think you were doing some research on our, um, some of our projects and the CIP, right? And you came across some of this.
When I was reviewing the, the question of whether the twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen project had been done. And that line already abandoned, I came across this discussion in the city council minutes.
And that's what brought it.
Ms. Wayman sent me the legal opinion that was sent to the.
So, that's how it came to be, that's how it's back on our plate, and now we'll look at it again.
Yeah.
Because honestly, it's kinda rusty.
And one, one more related question, we talked about electronic meters or wireless meters or something like that. If you have that, do they not reach far enough to read, you can't, it won't reach that far? So like, if you had something in the back and it was wireless, and if you could read it from the front yard, what difference does it? I mean, maybe if we need to service it or something like that, but just in terms of the, our crew going around and reading meters, it's still, seems like it was.
It's a good question, I don't know that answer on the meter piece. I think the bigger problem though is that the actual lines are in the back, the, the meter is second, the meter is a secondary problem. Uh, is that what you're gonna say?
There's not an issue specifically, if, if it's a, a radio meter or a digital meter that, uh, runs with cell service, that's fine. The issue's more if a line breaks in somebody's backyard and it damages their property and we have to try to get back there and dig it up and. You've got a backyard fence and stuff in the way.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
Excuse me, I move. I move that we, uh, ask the mayor to engage, uh, her, our city attorney or Bond Council as appropriate. To address, uh, the issues associated with the city paying for. Uh, relocation of a lateral in connection with, um, uh, a water line relocation. And specifically, uh, the requirements of. The Texas Constitution and Texas Local Government Code, Chapter five five two.
You have, you have a motion, council, is there a second?
Second.
A motion from Ms. Brown, a second by Mr. Duffy, uh, is there further discussion? Did you have any, anything else, councilor? Okay, hearing none, you have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, five zero. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-three, discussion impossible action regarding the process for final adoption of the city's official zoning map. We'll recognize Ms. Brown to lay out her, um, agenda item.
Okay, um, mayor and members of the council, you may remember that when the, um, um. Uh, zoning map came before us previously, there were some issues associated with. Uh, various lots as shown on that map, um, I volunteered to work with Ms. Kaler to go through all of the, the issues list. We have done that, those changes, um, we have satisfied ourselves as to what. Uh, corrections and changes would need to be made, there's one minor related issue now and that is. We have some, um, parcels of land that have no street address. They have a, uh, some are associated with, uh, an adjacent property. Um, but we haven't determined and we haven't asked WSB, the, uh, manager of the project. Whether it would be easier to identify those non-addressed lots by TCAD ID number. Or by the property address to which they're associated. Uh, we don't know if they have an opinion on that, we haven't had a chance to ask that question. But my recommendation would be, and I think we have a copy of the map up now, or, or attached to the agenda item. Would be to see if there are any further changes or corrections, um, I think Ms. Kaler or I can address any. Of the changes that came up beforehand to, uh, the good, that, and, and how, how we were able to resolve them. The ones that involved, um, a zoning, um, beyond the boundaries of the city of Rollingwood have been eliminated. Uh, we're now all, only dealing with what's within the, the boundaries of the city of Rollingwood. Uh, the, um, streets have been identified, we've confirmed the proper zoning for the track that was on. Uh, Bee Caves Road next to the hospital, uh, we have confirmed the configuration of the lots. The Whack Lot and the City of Rollingwood Park Lot. And we have confirmed that Rollingwood is in fact, uh, recognized as the jurisdiction. For those unaddressed tracks that are along Stratford and, uh, along. Um, I think there was one along Rollingwood Drive. Um, but we, we did for each of the lots in question that don't have an address, a Rollingwood address and are along Stratford. And are some other boundary of the city of Austin, we've confirmed on the TCAD website. That Rollingwood is getting a share of that, uh, tax revenue is being reported to Rollingwood. And that the proportion of that relative to the proportion of the adjoining jurisdiction looked correct. So.
And it's the same whole tree, uh, that, the, the property, I'm just curious, the property on Gentry Drive? Where I believe the, at the end of Gentry Drive, going as far west as you can, that's the Westlake Hills?
Yeah.
On North Peak, so that back part, Rollingwood's getting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we were able to confirm that. And, um, so, then the, if we're ready now to adopt. This GIS map as, if we're satisfied with the content of the map. And, and ready to adopt this GIS-based map, then the next question is. Um, and I've conferred with city attorney about it, we need to amend our ordinance with regard to the official map. Because our ordinance presumes that it is a surveyor map, flat map on a wall with Mylar. Covers that identify any changes. And this map does not meet those criteria, so we need a new ordinance for our GIS-based map. And then thirdly, uh, I think we need to also, as we adopt this map, we need to adopt a process. For the map's amendment. The process that's in the current ordinance is that the city secretary and the mayor sign off. Physically sign off on the map, uh, for any changes to it. That the changes are done by a registered surveyor and that the city secretary and the mayor sign off on that, on a physical map. So we need to also include within our new ordinance, the process by which this map will be amended and updated. From time to time is appropriate.
Great.
So, the, the, uh, there's not really action to be taken tonight. Except perhaps to ask the mayor to.
Do you, uh, what, go ahead, finish.
Confer with the city attorney on a proper ordinance that would allow the adoption of a GIS-based zoning map. Then bring that back to council and, uh, adopt both the map itself as, adopt the ordinance. And then adopt the map itself as, uh, the official map under the new ordinance.
Okay, uh, no, that's very helpful. First of all, thank you, I know you spent many, many hours, uh, with Ms. Kaler, thank you also to staff.
We knocked it out in an afternoon.
Just glad it was you and not me. Uh, no, very, very good work, thank you both for doing that, um, I know it was arduous and you had to look up apparently a number of things, but.
Thank you.
Um, I guess my first guided discussion would be with council, are there, to Councilwoman Brown's. Point, are, are there, are you generally happy with the map as presented today? And if not, please speak up, because we will kind of be moving forward with this new and improved version that. The two of them have worked so hard on, um. And I must say, I, I was doing a pretty good job of keeping up with y'all's email traffic until midday today. And so I don't know that I'm totally caught up with a few of the final questions related to, um, uh, working with our engineer, our vendor. Who's in charge of the GIS map, uh, we will get answers, I did see your last email, um, I do have some comments that you and I can. Visit about on how we'll move forward with our, our vendor on this project. Um, Ms. Kaler, do you have anything to add? I think we're, I think we kind of have our instructions to come back. And my thought would be that if, I don't hear anything more from council, we sort of have settled in on what the map will be. And then we would bring back a, a new ordinance to make sure that we adopt them, the ordinance and the map next time, um, appropriately. And then also we'll give, we'll take a look at the, the point that you make for the future when we do have zoning changes. And how we need to adjust.
We need, we need that in the ordinance too.
Is it all in the same ordinance? Okay, we'll combine all that into the same ordinance, and I think we could. Okay. We'll combine all that into the same ordinance. And I think we could, can you add that to us?
Oh, sure. Yes. Next meeting?
Yes. And can you coordinate with Councilwoman Brown so that-
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, um, drop something up, shoot it over to you for review if you'd like to see it first.
Be happy to.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, the plan then would be they'll get together and agree on a proposed version. Then we will bring you back the final map and then that agreed to, uh, document for an ordinance amendment. And then I think we could finally put this to bed, uh, that has been an issue, honestly, that we've been dealing with for many, many years. So, did you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add. I think that's a perfect synopsis.
I teed it up and you knocked out the part. Yes, ma'am.
Can I fix that bulge?
Yes, we fixed the bulge.
We did fix the bulge.
It's a straight line, I checked. It's a straight line.
Now, we didn't just fix the bulge. We actually went and checked.
We corrected. We corrected the bulge. There's no bulge.
It's always like the designer probably just like-
Very, very surgically.
Yeah.
And if any of y'all aren't interested in history on that, I can share.
Oh, I would love to hear the history on that.
After, after the meeting.
I want it right now.
All right. Thank you, Kaler.
So, can I ask?
Thank you all so much for all that work. That is fantastic.
Ms. Hudson?
Can I, can I ask a question? I wish I had noticed this earlier, but when I was looking at this, when I was reviewing everything the other day, I was curious, do we not have property that is zoned park down on Delana Lane? Because right now there's church and PUD and there's-
We checked that. Yeah.
So, it's, it is designated park space and PUD zoning.
Oh, I recall that. It's part of their agree, it's part of the agreement.
Correct. But it is not part of the zoning.
Got it.
Okay. Including the lift station. Including the lift station, that whole area. Okay. And there, and I just noticed this, this evening, there is a little tag. The tail by the church. By the church. Is unzoned. So, that is property. Okay. It's a small, very, very small parcel that is owned by the church that at some point was transferred to the city of Rollingwood, but is unzoned. It's a, it's technically a separate parcel of land from the church property. It's like- Okay. Twenty-five feet wide at one end. Owned by the church? Yes. Okay. But in Rollingwood? In Rollingwood. Okay. Okay. Well, I just wondered why there was nothing green down there and so.
So, what is the, just out of curiosity, and I'm not, not to keep us too long, but so what is the process? Do we need to zone that? Do we, I mean, it's just thoughts?
Great discussion for another time, probably.
Okay.
Okay. Look forward to it. All right. Anything else? Uh, and I don't think we, I mean, we sort of have a plan. I don't think there's action required, so.
Right.
Okay. All right. With that, we will close agenda item number twenty-three, uh, direct everyone's attention to reports, items twenty-four through thirty-six. Enjoy those reading at home. Kevin and Shanti are the only ones listening. Holly, you can read those to me when I get home. Um, anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Pooped.
A motion to adjourn by Ms. Hudson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.